I won't lose!
准備はいい？
Round 1, ready, go!
What the fuck was that? Down K plus G? Down K plus G? Alright, let's look at that. One, down K plus G. I never really thought about that. Okay, investigate. Mamba, ooh! Mm-hmm, into grab, okay? Hold that, ew! Okay. Huh? Question, what up, bro? What did he try to do there? Okay, Amayo, get the back turned. Why did he try to do... Was it because he was side turn? Or was it straight up? Okay, side turned into that. Okay, interesting. Side step into Amayo? Okay, hold on, let's write that down. Side turned into jumping spin kick. Investigate, that's two. Okay, let's look into it. Is that the forward forward? Okay, I think that's forward forward, uh, FFP plus K? Question mark, uh, advancing low. Investigate, okay, next. What up, vacation? How you doing, player? Yeah? Actually, let's look at that, actually. Okay, uh... Wide kick into, uh, wide kick... Fuck, right? You can't see the video you're watching if you're curious, you can't see? Oh, you can't see? Oh, because I'm a scrub, my bad. I'm literally watching a video and like studying it, my bad. I'm a bad streamer, guys. Alright, number five. Let's go back, let's go. That's studying. Oh, thanks for calling, Mr. Nevnev, I appreciate you. Growing ass man, by the way, bro, I'm an old man, that's why. Okay, to the legs, okay. Again, was that side turned in, was that side step into big spinning kick? I think it was. Hold on. Kick jab, side step into big spinning kick. So I'm guessing that move's got some juice on side, when it hits on side turn? Because the frames are different. We will investigate further. Pai Chan is sick, yo Pai Chan is sick. Oh, get fucked, get fucked, damage. Was that again, side turn into Amayo? It was! Okay, I'm seeing it, Brody's against pension, it's true. Side turn into Amayo. Big duck. Lion looks, spit as fuck, I like him, yo. I'm, I'm gonna keep you honest, like, Lion is the most annoying character in this game, so he is basically waifu Leo. Let's go, at least he kinda playing Leo, it's true, it's true, it's true. Big low, okay, cool, 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 cool. Cool. Alright. Alright, let's go. Okay. Okay. Get fucked. I'm a Leon Loki, a kind of a fanboy though, Loki. Hold that, got the stagger. Was that side step into Amayo? What up, honest? Well, saw this, ooh, flying kick! Hold that, hold that, side turn, hold that! Hold that, oh, 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 oh! Oh, what is that damage? Get fucked. Alright, we'll come down to this. I can see it, I don't care, I don't know the law, low. Okay. Okay, low. Oh, oh, not looking good for our hero. She started so well for her. Go with the bitch, oh, hold it. Cool, cooked, next one. Cooked. Watch one more video, then we go to the lab again. I was playing versus Tengu the other day. Was holding back to block at times, lol, yeah, it takes a while, it takes a while, it's hard, it's hard. You know what's really fucked up is that I come to, when I come to Dak Tekken, I end up holding R2 to block. Which is what I have it set to, I'm not even sure, look. Okay, open with the jab, bold. Get fucked, drink on him. Okay, okay. Let's examine the choices. Yeah, run up grab, why not? Uh, necro anti-black, yeah, it's annoying, I keep, I keep going back to my pressing the block button. Let's go, alright, cool. Yo, no step move, hold that. Bro is never streaming, we have to get into your brain, no, I'll stream Tekken again, but yeah, the first, next, next month, at least. Or a couple of months, I'm gonna be pretty obsessed. Oh, this is C-Money, C-Money's a big BF guy, he has a lot of content. Uh, wait, this game has block button, yep. Or a guard button. So, this is actually a big deal, uh, this move, I need to get into that, so, that move on wake up, ew! Uh, back, forward, back, forward, forward, K plus G on oki. Alright, I'm noticing that. Yeah, you can backdash or block, not both, so you have to pick. It's actually pretty normal, but when you come from Tekken, it's like, oh yeah, fuck, most games like this. Grab. Ah, throw, I'm guessing that's guaranteed. Okay. So, he does that on side turn, maybe, is that a good move on side turn now that I think about it? I dodge a move, and then I go into... Is that one, I was gonna say one four, that's PK into Boku Tai? Baba into Boku Tai on side turn? And then he has to guess between the mid and the low? That might not be a bad choice, you know, that might not be a bad choice, let's look at that. Okay, we'll investigate, so, uh, side turned, uh, what is that? Side turned, uh, P, K into buck? Alright, cool. Get thrown, bitch. Run up grab, why not? Get kicked, ooh! Ooh, fake. Oh, hold that. Oh yeah, dash blocking works in this game. That's true, I didn't think about that. Throws look amazing in this game, now they do. Okay, get hit the low. Okay, what are we doing, okay, that's... What did she try to do there, she got counter hit, what's she trying to do? She went for the kick, she threatened the high, but there was no high extension, tried to, and then he was like, nah, you ain't doing the high bitch. Counter hit, now you gotta hold that. Okay, what are we doing? Oh, the duck though, you seen that before? Hold that, the big button. I wonder what this kick is on block? There's no way that's safe. Surely she gotta mix it, and then she went for the jab, okay. No, no, he's not having that, side step, let's go. The low, my low's better, oh my god! Get thrown. Hmm, no! The combo? Get fucked, oh no! Woo! Damn, he won. Mule kick minus thirteen, cool, 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 thank you. God L. Yeah, so she got it, she could have had guaranteed damage on that. I'm not really focusing on defense right now, woo, mule kick, hold that. No, no, she saw that coming. The sweep, why not, run up sweep? Hold that, uh, uh, alright, what are we doing, what are we doing, what are we doing? Okay, again, side turn, so this guy, the other guy does side turn into spin, and to jump in, on Ayol? This guy, yeah, Shandee seems how to say. But this guy does side, uh, side turn into PK, into, but he didn't go into Boko Ho every time, which is interesting. Or Boku Tai. Hold that. Okay, jab into double spin kick, okay? Is there a reason though? Is there a reason though? That's a high, that's, that's low key kinda risky, I would have thought you'd go into mid. But I guess he wants to set up this situation, he wants to step? Okay, cool, what do you get though, you're minus, right? Hold that, Psycho Crusher. Psycho Crusher! Alright, cool. I'm pretty sure Tekken Lay Discord just become a Layfe Shun Discord, I wouldn't be surprised. Play five circular, maybe full circular, maybe, yeah, maybe, we'll investigate, we'll investigate. The whole point of watching these videos is to find out stuff to investigate. Um, so yeah, and I'm making notes in a separate document. You gotta hold that. Alright, good shit, Pi. Next. Alright, one more, one more, one more. These matches are fun to watch, at least to me. Alright, let's go. Alright, let's go, what are we doing against this big boy? Okay, let's see, what you got, Pi? So how we starting? Round start backdash, you're a Tekken player, come back in? Okay, what's that, down forward, uh, what's that, S3K? Okay, that move into the jab, okay? Are you, how you, how you starting your offense? Ew! Oh, that's different, so we have another move to do out of side turn. So, we dodge a thing, and then we do PP back P? Yeah, Tekken seven player. PP back P, and now you're back turned, and he's gonna hold that, yo, let's talk about it, let's talk about it. Side turned, P, P, 4P. Yeah, you gotta hold that. So now, he's got you, she's got you side turned? And you gotta guess? Or she's gonna hit you with the list trust? Or the low, you gotta guess? Oh, we jumping, why we jumping? We're beating the dick jab? Ooh, hold up! Is jump real? Jump, question mark? Jump, question mark? PP 4P plus one side turn? Side one, side, that's not too much though. But yeah, plus one, so you low key gotta guess? And then she like does the jump? Is that real? You gotta investigate that, that's fucked up. I would never have done that. Okay, so that's down, okay, so what happened here, what happened here? Oh, we gotta hold that. Okay, so that's down forward one, hold on, that's, yeah, 3, 3P? 3P into the jab, very sure. We gotta investigate 3P actually, just in general, 3P. Because I don't understand 3P, and everyone, but people keep respecting it. On side turn, it takes three frames to, uh, to block or side step, alright, see him? So we dig jab then. Using all three dimensions, that's it. So what are we doing, what are we doing, what are we doing, what are we doing? Okay, threaten the whole string? Okay, oh, hold that. Ooh! So, can we talk about that pushback? Can we talk about that pushback? So it's harder, yeah, it's harder for them to defend, yeah, 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 yeah. When you put them in that situation, they're in, uh, they're in real trouble, we'll look at side turn in a bit. Okay, so he went for two hit strings, dodged the first one, got hit by the second. We, we hidden those, so I'm guessing it's her turn, right? He's not plus? This move was a stop a tracking move, which is a good idea. Look at the pushback. Into dick jab, okay? Into grab, why not? Hold that, 14 frame, 14 frame launcher, why not? Oh, that's it, hit him with the bows! Got that. Oh, he tried it, he tried it, he tried it, I think I tried this. What is this? Okay, so that was the, that was Hadouken, that was quarter circle forward, uh, punch now? I think that used to be forward forward punch, but now it's quarter circle forward punch. Tried to backdash, and he said, no, how about you don't backdash, counter hit, bitch? Oh, and he, she said, how about? How about I wake up and launch you? This kicks minus four, you reckon he reacted to that? Will you reckon to the whiff? Or you reckon she's just doing YOLO? Good up, Jerry. Place your bets, you reckon that was reacting to the whiff, or just YO, wake up YOLO? I feel like I was YOLO, bro, one more time, I think that was YOLO, I think she just did it, I think she just welcome did it. It was so fast, there's no way that was reaction, I was like, fuck it. 14 frame launcher, I thought launchers were 17 frame, no, 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 the other one, the high is a 14 frame launcher, and it's like, uh, has an extension. But that one, that one's like minus 17, you're dead, that's 17 frame launch? But yeah, if the opponent gets minus 11, where's I turn, unavoidable damage, uh, becomes possible, yeah, yeah, yeah. Hold that. Okay, what are we doing? Oh! Yo, they said that move is pretty good, you know, but I never use it. So, punch. Hold that. Oh, crush your low! Hell, is it the fastest universal move in the game, 12 frame, guys? Yeah, except for Pi's got an 11 frame jab, but shh. Oh, again, the reads! My end show, get fucked. But yeah, 12 frame is, is the number you're looking for, 12 frame is the, is this, is like Tekken's 10 frame, it's like the fastest number. But some people break that slightly. Fuck Pi, nah, Pi's good. Oh, that's, that's the launcher, that's 14 frame. Hold that, into Boku Tai, yes! So that's something I need to add, like, that's like her go-to punish, that's like a 10 frame, or 11 frame punish, this one? That one, ba-ba, you do something with minus 11, oh, hold that. Oh, what was she trying, what was she trying, what was she trying, what was she trying? I might steal this, even though it didn't work, it might work, hold on. That was like the safe move? Oh, she tried to do, she tried to do like fucking some Feng Wei Kenpo shit, and got counter hit. Throw, let's go. Side step, big jab, low, big jab. Ooh! Oh, get fucked, not looking good for our hero. Not looking good for our hero, ooh! She's just a girl! She's just a girl! Okay. Side step, throw him, yeah? Oh, get thrown. Grab him? Yes, okay. Jab 6P, why not? Damn, Wolf seems fucked up, like, when he knocks you down, he charges at you, that must be scary as fuck. Okay, that crow is sick, I need to start doing it more. Let's go! Chad needs to learn, Layfe, not Pi, nah, bro, I'm sorry. Yes, I currently need to start working out, lose some weight, yeah, sure. Ooh, we got parry! Ooh, ooh, ooh! Can we tell that again? Why did she do that? Did she react or she guessed, she must have guessed, right? She was like, nah, I know what you're doing, that, that guaranteed? Ooh, 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 ooh! All that off a parry? No way! You feel Ask is parry with shit? What the fuck? Ooh, 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 ooh! That was a read, not a guess yet, oh yeah, whatever, same thing. Hello. Let's go. Oh, look at that, yo, this is what's pissing me off, these fake kicks into grabs are gonna fuck me up, bro. Look at this, look at this fake kick into grab, huh, psych! Yo! That's fucked. Yo, try that again! Try that again! That, that fake, huh, psych, nah, 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 nah. It's a guess on why, exactly, it's a guess on why people do it, it's a guess when Western is the, when Asians do it, it's a read. It's Yomi. Alright, cool, another Shandee, another Shandee, let's go. Alright, I keep saying this is the last one, but it's too much fun, this is the last one, then we'll go into the lab. Yes, office Pi is best Pi. Okay, so, that move, I know it's annoying to start, everyone respects that move, and I don't understand why. Everyone seems, at high level, seems scared of this move. Like, she tags you with this, and they don't do nothing, and I'm like, why are you scared? So I start doing that more. Uh, uh, hold on. Yo, jab 6P, jab 6P, alright. We playing honest version, oh, you should have died! So this is another one, it was side turned into PK buck. Side turn, PK buck, yes, had to eat the low, get fucked. Throw him. Get grabbed. Oh no. Yeah, 5 is neutral, yeah. Oh, whiff. Oh! My girl got Shandee, my girl got Shandee, my clue is motherfucker drinking. Wow! Shandee's fucked, alright, who's next, who's next, who's next? Okay. Oh, Amayo! Okay, so why is she doing Amayo? That's it, jab into 6P. Yeah, don't get cute. And then after that? I guessing she predicts the side, the, the step? She's like, no, you ain't stepping me, got you. Now she's got you plus whatever. Am I what, she didn't do it? Okay, cool, now what's next? Grab? No, she's back turned. Ooh, did that? Oh, wait, I just realized, if that hits you, you're immediately side turned. Oh, that's fucked, that's why it's sick. So if I got you, you're side turned, I'm back turned, so you immediately got to guess, mid-low. He gets low, he got hit, now he's gotta, he's gotta fucking shake out of it. Alright, didn't get much though. That's interesting. The low. Hold that, oh, oh, get grabbed, drink? Oh, yo, what is the distance on that move, bro? Amayo? So again, so what happens on block? What does she do on block? Amayo? Okay, so she got back turned on block. What is? Hmm. I'm curious. Because obviously you're minus in back turn, what do you do, how fucked are you? Oh, she just turns and blocks, alright, cool. Oh, she tried to do some more fuck shit. Low, alright, cool. Alright, cool, hold that. Alright, let's go. The Psycho Fairy, exactly, it's like, hello? This move, I need to use this move more often, like, this move? No, no, not this one, that one. You get hit by that, that, is that on my list? Yeah, it's on my list, alright, cool, oh, look at that. The low? Hold that. The second hit, where? Yeah, people keep respecting when you get hit by that. Oh, get grabbed. Seven drinks. Don't let him drink, don't let him drink, bitch, oh! Hit him with the Feng Wei, this move? This move right here, this move cheap as fuck, I found this in the lab yesterday, this move cheap as fuck, this move? Seems like the fuck, yeah, it does seem like a big fuck you low. That move, you know when Feng does that backward, back forward punch? Back forward one? You know, when he goes back and then suddenly hits you with the mid? And it fucking launches you? That's what this is, bro. Look how, look how she goes back, look how evasive she is. She's low key a scumbag. I've upgraded this, she's not layout, she's Feng. Look at the evasiveness of that move, bro, it's cheap. And that move there? Yo, LD Wells, what up, player? And this move? This move? Plus on block? So you do that on oki, I see that. And that, and that follow-up kick is guaranteed. How you doing, Wells? Alright, waifu Feng, 100%. I thought waifu Leo, but no, upgraded waifu Feng. Okay, alright, so he's not respecting it that much, so this move? Hold that, she's got a charge up, uh, charge up K? And he was getting, she was getting kinda spicy, she's like, oh, you respect me? And he's like, psych, I don't respect you that much, get fucked. I don't believe in the charge up K, bro, I don't believe in it. Waifu Feng, you got me interested, that's basically what she is, bro, I really think she's waifu Feng. Hold that. Chill, main, taking a quick break, I see you, I see you, ooh, hold that. Oh! Oh, the mid? Oh, fuck you, take my shoulder. Don't let him drink, don't let the old man drink, bro, you're gonna get fucked up. Alright, cool. Yo, we blocking the lows. We're doing the throws. Hold that, uh, again, that whiff. The charge, oh! She got, got, he got, got, okay, I believe in it now. He went for the dick jab, got crushed. No, don't dick jab me, look at the damage, bro, look at the damage! Oh no! Is there a maximum amount of jinx? I think he just keeps going, I think there's a maximum where it's useful, but he can just keep going. I think once you get past 10 or something, it's probably not that much useful. Maybe that's why they respect it, the low hand sweep, yeah, maybe, maybe. So you gotta represent it, you gotta show that you want to let that, let the fucking, the kick fly, I guess? Otherwise they won't respect it, and I guess noobs won't respect it because they don't know any better. 3P is fucked up, main. Alright, listen, Wells, I know it's not your main, but can you tell me why that move is fucked up? Real quick? This is my last one, I promise, I keep saying this is my last one, but watching these matches is kinda fun, I ain't gonna lie. Oh yeah, it's always useful to have more drinks because you can lose, because you can lose some, yeah! He gains 0.8 damage per drink or something? What, all the way up to 40? Fuck. Keep watching, alright, cool, bet, taking notes, taking notes. The follow-up is an EX high, so you can't dick jab it, yeah, okay, fair enough. But it's like minus 13 though, right? Throw. Kind of side step Eva, got you, yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, that's what, break was kinda clean. Oh, that's, that's what I'm talking about, 14 frame launcher, get fucked. That's a good Abade tool. Oh, blocked the low, now you gotta hold this damage. Ooh! Nice combo, asshole. Oh, we out here, no, no, oh! He just did it! Yo, Wells, is that safe? Is that kick safe, or did he just say fuck you? That, that, that kick seemed, that was like a racially motivated kick, I ain't gonna lie. Yeah, so you wanna wait for the charge here? That's... Bro, that's, that seemed like a racially motivated kick, I ain't gonna lie, bro, that was fucked up. Not safe, yeah, there's no way, there's no way. Jackie don't like Chinese women, bro. Jackie does not like Chinese women, that was a racially motivated kick, that was fucked up. I rock, I fuck with it though. Hold it. She hit him with the Oliver, I call this the Oliver twist, I call this one the Oliver twist, yeah? When she kinda comes at you, cupping the hands, look, 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 that, that, with the, with the two hands? Please sir, may I have some more? Please sir! Again, look at the Oliver twist. Hit him with the Oliver twist. Please sir! Please sir, may I have some more? Damage! Uh, but the charge kick has to be evaded only one way, so you have to pay attention to which side. Uh but the charge kick has to be evaded only one way so you have to pay attention to which side to evade okay 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 so it demands a lot of you okay I need to use that more The sweep Okay cool hold that Oh throw break oh Oh tried to do it again and she said fuck you Yeah launch also if they cancel 3p it's plus so better not press buttons is it actually plus I was talking to what's his name I was talking to uh 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 GT fucking gentleman thief and he was like oh yeah The frames are better I'm like okay how much better he's like I don't know I'm like bro you like one of the best players in America you don't know I was hoping you'd give me a number it's plus three plus two plus five I'm trading more don't tell you either I gotta lap that shit Hold that oh oh is that the answer to the box shit That might be it you know hold on that that So he got hit he got punished so BF would be complete with a guest character Yoshimito fuck Yoshimito And also when you get in here you were here for the beta when you get into the game bro we're getting both alright so you're going to Bokuhou and he's like how about I jump out Damn I thought this shit was real but you can just jump out You can just jump out I'm fucking pissed I'm sleepy no worries bro how the fuck can you jump out bro That's annoying hold on let me see if you can hold on number nine P K buck Catch jump question mark Gotta be a way That can't be the option select bro I'm pissed Tell me it's fake the whole time Oh you got fucked you gotta hold that Oh fuck your low sweep Oh 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 yes we out here yes are you getting no guaranteed damage though oh racially motivated kicks Oh the cross up Oh no hold that Come on bro 2d tactics hundred percent 2d tactics honestly okay in this game is legit 2d Hold that ba ba okay Uh hold that plus four oh hold on wait is that guaranteed if they tech roll hold on tech roll this throw And you just do fucking oh that might be guaranteed oh we have to look at that we have to look at that hold on hold on hold on hold on Uh crouch dash honestly no office pie is best pie crouch dash throw Yeah on oki it's really good it's there's many situations where it's actually legit good it's not like Tekken where it's like why is it even in the game Crouch dash throw into uh 4 6 Uh K plus G If they tech question mark damn I got 10 notes already lots of things to laugh alright cool Oh the side no leave my girl leave her Not looking good for our hero spoilers he wins Oh kick this bitch in the face huh and the oh yeah yeah done GG alright cool next Next oh let's go Eileen I don't know nothing about this bitch every time she shows up I just I just get mixed I just get mixed this one and Sarah I just get mixed I gotta lap these bitches She cute though Oh let's go Alright let's go let's go Jeff Frame Let's go ooh 6p grabber broke out ooh don't stop me ooh in the side that might have been guaranteed bro Ooh oh yo basically it's still gonna work oh you low key got fucked up It's not looking good for our hero It's not looking good for our hero not gonna lie BF dressed up with a fighting game attached to it nah BF customs kinda suck I ain't gonna lie Can you do that So here's my question this looks like mid high I feel like people at this level should be ducking that shit so is there like something is there a reason not to duck it is that like a mid extension When DOA though yeah maybe maybe it's something Yo hold that Yo my girl getting fucked up oh I take it back That feels sick Oh get fucked oh see that's some cheap shit that's some cheap shit It was clearly her turn and I was like how about I evade it because I'm Feng Way oh This bitch shit No Okay so that's the low again so that has like an extension is that extension high or mid Okay bug the throw let's go No we're not having that Hold that Like throw Hold that yeah Oh no we're not having that Nah to be fair DOA is more closer to vet your fire than to Tekken Oh Harukawa let's go Let's go let's go Let's go Hold that Okay let's go okay let's pay close attention to this round Dick jab into throw she's not you're not throwing this bitch She is not you're not throwing her how do I get like you mega panda how do I get like you not getting thrown Ba 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 why did she do that hold on Was that a read Why'd she do that that moves like a minus a billion Yo get fucked The sweep hold that oki oh let's go I really hope there's no meta but there won't be a meta bro if there is a meta it'll be like a guard mea Like a so caliber guard mea it won't be like power up shit They pretty much confirmed that in their recent interview I don't even wanna guard me I could live with the guard mea because if if that means that we get rid of fucking what's it called stun Shake the stun I'll take it Grab him spin this bitch let's go What are we doing hold that So that's two people that have not ducked it and it's Jeffrey again That's two people that are not ducked it this move this that Fuck cuz he got hit but like Can you throw that out I don't know much about the stun so I can't say yeah stun's annoying as fuck but that's what if it stunned me is what it takes to get rid of the stun it's alright Or stagger I mean stagger oh get fucked Shandee's annoying let's go Yeah hold that Are you drinking on me oh get fucked Go mid smid 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 Alright cool what's next what's next Okay oh Down stop trying to abuse that move oh hold that buck Hold that yo that move on oki is kinda fucked up okay hold on Okay so you do this So is that the answer if you hit him with that you get like back forward uh on their tech interesting Forcing them to wake up into minus four is nasty work I'm a big fan I need to come up with all these setups These Xia Yu style setups waking up into minus four fucked up Although not as fucked up as it would be in Tekken because minus four you can still move around with this shit Hold that oh yo be honest Hold that hit him with the hit him with the Oliver twist the Oliver twist Oliver twist Oliver twist Hold it no not throwing me No gimmicks oh So hold on so what was that that was down back one again the star move followed by P PK Oh PK right first one counts as the first P what are the numbers when it comes to stepping there are no numbers bro you can be minus nine and step But if they do a track if they do a tracking move they do a tracking move and you step counter hit trade up counter hit Get fucked And also keep in mind that throws be uh throws be stepping for the mix when you have someone is throw or mid I think that's my understanding correct me if I'm wrong chat Because you can step to potentially beat the mid but you get blown up by the throw So stepping counts as attacking oh it counts as a choice it the game recognizes it as a choice If throws are homing I know throws are homing yeah I guess it counts attacking or more a case of like Throws be all of it yeah 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 cool 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 So the so the fundamental mix is mid or throw When you have someone in the Taku when you have someone in that fucking uh true mix up situation it's not mid low nine times out of ten it's it's mid throw Hold that This is why I keep saying mids are throw yeah I know it's mid throw yeah but I'm just explaining why because of the size to go to the side step Side stepping works all the way up to minus nine I've seen it work You don't have to worry about the specific frame it's just like I think the next attack this I think the next button this motherfuckers gonna do is gonna be a linear move Low mid or high I think it's gonna be linear so I side step And if you're wrong you get counter hit throw oh you get a counter hit tracking move or throw So again I don't know if I believe in Bokuhou is this another game where box with the box stand sucks Okay ba ba okay I got the punish right into Bokuhou what happens bitch jumps over oh okay it's the Bokuhou low that he beat alright fair enough get fucked Imagine buck with a low couldn't be me couldn't be Leo Are most tracking moves counter hit launches no no most aren't most aren't most are kinda slow and they're not counter hit launching Hold that Ooh she went for the double not a bad choice But you're about to die bitch ba ba oh he watched the whole thing you're so dead Landing a tracking move he goes yeah landing a tracking move specifically counts uh counter hit some some are counter hit launches But like not all in fact most aren't the ones that are are killer No landing a counter hit when you're evading when you're evading not if it's normal hit Oh they'll get her out Yeah he don't believe in Bokuhou anymore no not anytime when you're evading If you if you catch a tracking move when they're standing still it's not it's not a counter hit It's when they're evading Oh get fucked in the back Yes it's looking good for our girl it's ain't looking good for our girl I'm not gonna lie Alright what we doing a normal hit that catches and evade equals counter hit yeah Okay 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 in the back let's go hold that okay Tried to hit him with the Oliver twist get trip that throw is so a lot of throws in this game look really sick I think this throw looks so wack That throw is so wack I don't know why it looks like some playground some fucking playground shit Yo get fucked Hold that okay get fucked Oh oh Yo the grab let's go Leon team's annoying as fuck But my man Chan Chan plays him so it must have some sauce I just don't know what it is Boku Tai imagine Bokuhou stance with a low couldn't be Leo Let's go Hello 14 frame Iyo I don't know if I believe in amayo bro I don't know if I believe in that Tried to catch a step minus five in back turn oh my I think minus five in back turn this is Again when I see these numbers as a second player I get so scared because like okay they blocked it now you're minus five in back turn you're so fucked like what do you do in this situation You just block now they got you side turn I don't know if I believe in that You don't believe in I don't believe in a lot of shit I don't I don't I don't believe in it I'm open to being convinced of all of it but I don't believe in it currently The mid now your side turn hold it amayo okay amayo on hit though I believe in that amayo on hit he tried to step Tried to step and she said how about no step that counter hit Now you gotta hold it now he's gotta guess middle low I think he guessed low and then he went mid got hit with the mistrust got hit with the list trust Are you dead let's go let's go signs of life got hit with the list trust fucking up the budget with that kick let's go Oh get fucked Hello string oh hit him with the Oliver twist please sir may I have some more Please sir may I have some more ba 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 Oh Please sir okay that sequence seems kinda fucked up she has the Lizzie and the Oliver twist that's it bro hold on hold on So what am I seeing she did the first hit of that so my boy Chiba Tara kinda got nervous 6p on block I'm pretty safe so does he fuzzy what do I do when I six piece block I think fuzzy or just great crouch dick jab side step Um I mean sweet in Japanese by the way abai I don't know I don't know what she's saying though Okay jab into the 14 frame yeah he was waiting for the second hit didn't come dick jab 14 frame Oliver twist 6p Why I know I don't know I wish she spoke Chinese Hold it yo that's kinda fucked up yeah she is but we already said everyone who's Asian speaks Japanese everyone who's like western speaks English They don't give a fuck Because this is not Tekken yeah I know but that that's something they should steal from Tekken everyone should just speak their like their native language I'll be sick Give me truth to the martial arts we choose the language hi Chan good Chinese Alright this guy I like this guy Oh let's go new main versus old main let's go On taco stage Dick jab alright cool I guess Good fuzzy I finished my first tutorial video hey Rushdown Turtle let's fucking go post the link 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 It'll probably stop you from posting it but I'll repost it post the link yo so uh a bit of a side story everyone watching this all of you No matter if you're watching on YouTube or Twitch is very important to me when I first started uh when I you remember when I made that fuck uh VF Reddit video yeah There was a player it was someone from uh Twitch that actually came on and was like Uh sorry it's someone on Reddit like hey they were kinda really mean to you but I think it's a really good idea um do you wanna collab with me And I said to him I was like bro respectfully I don't wanna collaborate with you because the fact that you've come out of nowhere to like you know look like essentially checking on me And makes me know that you're exactly the kind of person we need to be making trade you're exactly the kind of person who needs to go out and create content Um you seem very knowledgeable I was like go do it and if there's any if there's ever the moment you start I will support you Right because like I don't know how good I don't know what your life is like I don't know your situation but you clearly have a good Character and if you're very knowledgeable about the game we need more voices like you that was my thing so that is basically who Rushdown Turtle is came out of nowhere just to be nice to me So even though I made the whole video about fuck VF Reddit this was one of the coolest kindest people So now he's like I think I wanna start making guides because I I think you're right I think more people who have knowledge even if they're not fucking world beating pros Is to go out and make guys so I'm like fucking A uh and I said the moment you make that shit I'm posting that shit so if you like me if you care about me at all Uh then go check out this dude's videos uh go check it out nothing but love nothing but love Because honestly the best thing about VF so far has been the community so go check it out go hit like I don't care if it's only made one of you in fact I don't even care if the video shit Go hit like and subscribe I'm sure they get better right go hit him go support him because he's a good dude he's a good dude and by the way same with all of you guys man I wanna say who this video is for I'm good fuck I'm good the videos for it's for everyone go hit like button go hit like or go hit subscribe I'm good fuck I'm good fuck I'm good to people who are good Wait who is the video for tell me real quick before I hit play Too late I'm gonna hit play but I'll read it Alright let's go In the side the video is for people who are new to the game and understand the basics but now wants to start really improving oh shit so for me I bet definitely go hit the like and subscribe button definitely go hit like subscribe yeah that's us baby I just subbed and added to my watch layer list good luck good looking out bro good looking out honestly honestly as a gift to me guys as a gift to me go go I'm gonna watch that shit later Okay let's go let's go How about that Kick kick Uh let's fucking go Uh, let's fucking go. Uh, oh, that's risky. I feel like you shouldn't be doing that. Cause when I was playing against Marley J, Marley J was out here fucking ducking that and murdering me for it. What if I don't want to improve? I just want to win and still be a scrub. Alright, well, still go watch it. I'm glad I was right into the real love teaching. Good shit, good shit. It is good for the soul, I think. Like, okay, I'm not an expert in many things, but I know that, yeah, sharing that knowledge, it feels good to share knowledge. And also, I find that when you try to explain it to other people, you actually solidify your own understanding a lot of the time. Like, I do it for selfish reasons. Cause it makes me go, oh, I actually don't know what the answer is to this. And you have to go look it up. I mean. Anyway, enough love. Let's go watch people kill each other. Okay, both of them. Round star backdash. Let's go. So that is her best move. That run down forward, down forward kick, 3K. Into the hit. Oh, the fuzzy though. Oh, 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 damage. So this is, I don't know, is Mian Show real? Is this shit real? That back turn stance? Is this real? This stance? I never see anyone do it. Like, is this real? Uh, I'm losing hope for Tekken more I play and really want to learn VF, so anything, yeah. Oh, you're losing hope? That's interesting. Well, watch half the video. Lol. Anyone, not anyway. We'll see. Let's go. Ba-ba.
Hypnotist. Hold it, mid low. Unique blocker animation, so blocking every attack, that'd be kinda crazy. Can I tell you something that I love about this that I didn't realize until last today? Everyone's walk animation is different in this game, based on their martial art. You notice that? If you hold back, everyone walks back differently. Hold that. Oh! Realistic martial arts, cap up. Nah, it's knockoff hypnotist, she didn't get it until five, okay, knockoff hypnotist, cool, cool, cool. For me, one of the things, now that we're all having it in the chat, I'll tell you what I wanna see. I want MK style, every character has an interaction with every other character. I decided for match, so I wanna know what they all think about each other. I want, I want serious investment in story, and I want the story to feel like a fucking 90s martial arts film. Serious, serious. I want heavy investment in character and lore. Heavy, heavy, heavy. Cause it might seem trivial to fighting game players, but that stuff matters, bro. That stuff matters. The reason why people still care about Tekken is because they remember how they felt about Tekken characters back in Tekken 3. They remember. That shit sticks with you emotionally. I want a good story. And I wanna know how they all think about each other. His characters are cool, but yeah, I don't really care. Imagine Pi and VF, Pi May, your Pi May and VF be fucked up. Leon entered the ring, not a single thought behind his eyes, lol. Alright, let's go. Let's go, uh, uh. Oliver Twist gets blocked, hold on, Oliver Twist gets blocked. You are in Nataku, minus six, what do you do? Side step? Good choice. I'm trying to see Jeffrey have a boss fight against a shark, bro, you guys in your shark, bro. I, I said, I think he needs a better story, I'm just gonna say it. I know you love your shark story, I think he deserves a better story. Maybe that's just me. I don't believe in Amayor, bro, bro, guys, I don't believe in Amayor. Every time I, listen. I don't believe in Amayor, I don't believe in it, bro. Look at this. Alright, it wasn't that bad, but still, I don't believe in Amayor, I don't believe in it. I don't believe in Amayor, bro. Lots of story thirds between the various, exactly, lots, 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 lots. That move always tracks, cause the second hit comes out so slow. So even if they dodge the first one, you always get hit by the second. That move is cash money. I might have to think about that, I might have to think about that, hold on. I don't know what that, mid, slow mid, extension, footsteps. But do you get nothing? Thing to remember is that most of the characters actually don't have much to do with this shit, yeah, exactly, for fixing, no, but they need to change that, they need to redo that. Like, I'm sorry, they have to, cause you have to remember that VF was made for the arcade, so it's like, we don't have time for story modes and stuff, but like, we're in a new era, like, we need story. Story is why you select the characters. I wouldn't want anyone involved in J6. You don't want anyone involved in January 6th? Damn. It's wild, bro. Why are you talking about Trump? Shit. Who the fuck about January 6th? Lol, no, I'm joking. Wolf is fine, just going around looking for fights, yeah, but I want more, I want more, write, write more, write more. And there are no K's in VF6 on the cards, yeah, exactly. One thing I give VF, uh, one thing I'll give Tekken credit for is that they were aware that the console market was the future, and they, they figured that out before other people. They figured that out before other people. It's, am I what? Insufficient, plus feminine emotional emphasis, put together, not, am I up? Look, Chris, I'm saying, am I up? Cause it's funny. But I do appreciate the correction, I ain't gonna lie. But forgive me if I ignore it. Cause am I up? It's funny to say, but yeah, am I, am I, am I what? I got you, thank you. I'm convinced at this point Vanessa is VF5, isn't actual Vanessa and is a clone. That would make sense. Leifei and Lau have the best rivalry, in my opinion, I mean, in theory, yes, I've read the story, but like, I've not seen any cutscenes of it, so did it happen? Oh, hold that. We ever tried VF4, Evo on PS2? I didn't, I didn't. Hold that, oh, the sidestep! I don't know if I believe in the two, and I don't know if I believe, oh! Damn, is Bakuho fake? Is Bakuho fake? One four, motherfuckers are stepping in and fucking jumping out of it, is Bakuho fake? Bakuho might be fake, chat, the VF scrub is true. Brad and Eileen could be mashed into a story mode, more, they're just near, I mean, there's lots of stuff you can do, this is dope. Content wise, everything I asked for, but far more fleshed out conservation of any VF, yeah, I've heard, I've heard, I've heard it's one of the best fighting games I've ever made, actually. Hold that. Hold that, oh, no launch! Oh, we're throwing you? Oh! That should definitely have a quest mode, yeah, quest mode, some, something like that. Oh, but it's, no, yo, but it's, uh, it's the Yakuza guys, they're gonna have a story mode, bro, they're gonna have, there's gonna be a world map, it's gonna be Shenmue, it's gonna be Shenmue. It's gonna be create a character in story mode, you wait. I, I, I tell you what, I do believe in this though, I've only seen one player online use it, but I'm, I might be the, I might be the pi player who does it, this shit. That Mian Show into fucking Baba, that's all like Jalen. I don't know what you are minus, what is Mian Show into the, into the jabs? Hmm, Mian Show... Oh, Mian Sho Ho or something like that? Uh... Uh... Plus, Jalen on block? Question mark, alright, cool. When we getting into the lab? Good question, after this one, after this one, after. I've got 12 questions to ask, okay. That one, see that Mian Show, that, I believe in that, bro, I believe in that one. Okay. Again? Baba, in the, into the mid, yeah, we got mixed, we got mixed! Into the high, Baba, didn't duck it, huh, huh? Tried ducking? Hold that! I believe in the Mian Show, and then into the fucking block? What I'm saying, me too, bro, and then look at this shit. Mian Show, into the mid, hold that, and then Mian Show again, now you gotta guess, into fucking Bakuho, now you gotta guess again, mid low? Oh! Ohhh! Look how fucked, look how bent she is, bro, look at this angle! What is this angle? Oh, she got fucked up. Oh, that was comedy, bro, that was comedy, that was comedy, huh, I got him, got him, do it again, huh, Mian Show, oh, get your ass down, bro. I hope they have a more in-depth story mode, cause that's what they're missing from this, 100%, uh, hardback, 100%. 100%. Below, hold on, where was that, Mian Show on OK? Oh no, uh, Bakuho on OK, Baba, into OK, middle low, I went low? Ooh! No, after her. Ooh, 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 ooh. Ooh, ooh, ooh! Ooh, that was clean, that was a good match, that was a good match, alright, 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 okay. Watch them more in a bit, but let's go to the lab, yeah, and start investigating our questions, yeah? Alright, bet, so, give me a second, question number one. Question number one, down KG, what are we doing with come, down KG, what are we doing? Down KG, yeah? Normal hit, plus three, normal hit, baked it all up, how you doing, player? Thanks for joining the family? Plus three. That's good. What are we talking about on counter hit though? What's counter hits saying? Education stream, let's go, yeah, I'm studying for my, it's not educational, cause I'm not giving advice, I'm more learning, but you can learn with me. And if you have more knowledge, which you probably do, help me out, but um, what do we get on counter hit? What's the juice? That's the, ooh, that was fucked, okay. Okay, so... So it's a combo? Okay, that's real, so... So this move should be absolutely be in the repertoire, what's the, 24 frames? Okay, 24 frames? Alright, let's say we don't, I'm, I'm guessing it's, I'm guessing it's death on block? Yeah, you, yeah, you die, you just die, okay, cool. How do you, how do you know you can get a combo or not, chat? Um... The combos in this game are pretty simple, you gotta get a feel for it, the same, once you've seen a couple of crumples, you kinda know. Like this crumple, there are other characters who have that crumple, that crumple, like, that's a, that's a combo crumple. That's a combo crumple. Um... Okay, so... Kinda like how you know in Tekken, if a character goes, like, there's the belly stunt, like, ugh, you know you can get a combo, you might not know what the combo is, but you can do, you can get a combo. It's like that. Okay, so plus three. And I'm in full crouch, what can I do from full crouch? That is, hold on, 12 is the fastest move most characters have, so 15 frames, what's my 15 frame move? That's 16 frames, so there's a, there's a... That's, uh, 16 frames. If not counter hit? Oh, 15 frames. So that's a frame chart, that's a frame chart, if it can do anything? That's good to know. But what's that, what is that kick on block? What is that kick on block? Obviously they can sidestep it. Minus seven, ew, so they get the tackle, they can, they can, they get to mix me up. So maybe, let's not flowchart into that, let's... Maybe that? Maybe that's the move? Maybe just take the plus three? Maybe only do, maybe only do that on a big read? Or maybe, okay, maybe this is the flowchart, maybe the flowchart, maybe the flowchart is... Into like a grab, right? And if they, if they demonstrate that they are pushing buttons? Yeah, in, into 6P or throw, yeah, that's exactly, Mandigo, that's exactly where I was going, that's exactly where I was going, if I default into throw? And then if they demonstrate that they push buttons? After that, I just go... Don't push buttons! So, our level one? Mister VFTC, what a player, and Luca, damn, everyone's joining, listen. I'm just studying, if you got any advice, let me know, so our flowchart, hold on, while standing 4P is very evasive? Uh, while standing 4P? Oh, that one, yeah, I saw him do that. But is that, but here's the thing though. So what if they fuzzy? What if they fuzzy? Good question, if they fuzzy? Do another one, good question. I'll be honest with you, I'm not worrying about fuzzying yet, if they, here's the thing, real talk, if my opponent is fuzzying, I'm already dead. I'mma keep it a stack, if my opponent is fuzzy, again, I'm not trying to become god, you can't become god like in a single thing, one step at a time, know what I mean? One step at a time. Like, let me, let me learn how to beat scrubs and intermediates, then I'll deal with the pros, but you are correct, you are correct, that's, that's tough, that's tough, I'm doing well, Luca. Let me deal with the fucking, let me learn how to beat Fujians, yeah, then I can worry about gods later, but you are correct. So this, so my level one will be this, into throw, it's really high stuff, I think it's really high stuff, and at that point, honestly, my point in doing fuzzies, I've already lost, bro. Juicebox is fuzzy in me, and I got no idea what to do, 100%, we gotta learn, so this? Into, what throw should we do? Should we... The prob, oh, hold on, hold on. Yeah, that's the one, that's the one, uh... Yes, 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 okay, so, so... Throw choice is kinda situational, yeah, of course, of course, cause you gotta mix them, but it's still good to have like a, the whole point of this is I wanna have like a level one, when I'm not thinking. And the only one my opponent shows, that they're able to get around it, I have to start moving to different places of the flowchart, does that make sense? So this, into throw? Strong. Mix up both, her while rising throws, for PJ, if you, PG, if you wanna ring out behind, forward throw? Cause I know she got the, the wa, she has while standing throws, she's, she's like... That guaranteed? I think that's guaranteed, right? Right? Hold on, what, what, hold on, what, what is this? Is that, no, 17, so it won't work. Hold on, hold on. Are you trying to ma, no, 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 I picked, last week, my goal was to find out which character I wanted to play, I played a bunch of different characters, and I picked Pi, so this week, it's like, I wanna develop a game plan, a level one game plan. I wanna work on it and lab on it all the time, uh, with, uh, with Lei specifically. Uh, sorry, with Lei, with Pi specifically, and uh, that's the goal, so yeah, I'm not doing every character, this is the character I picked, now that I've picked it, so I wanna get decent. I might change my mind later on, but for now, I wanna spend probably the next month trying to get solid with this character, and obviously, more importantly, learn VF in general. Uh, so, so everyone, so what's our flowchart? I shouldn't show you this, cause you're gonna beat me in the lobbies now that you know my flowchart, but basically, back, into throw? And then, the only way to beat this would be to Abare. And if you out here Abari, and I'm like, how about this, or hit him with the Oliver Twist? Hit him with the Oliver Twist? Ah, okay, so let me write that down, hold on. So, number one? So... Down KG, okay. Default will be while standing throw? Hold on, while standing throw, main mix up for Pi is 4-6 KG, or 3P, and throws, give me a second, don't overwhelm me, okay, so default is a while standing throw versus while standing kick, while standing kick? Okay. So that's the mix, right? Um, if they block it, I'm dead, but I also need to learn to, on, on counter hit, react. So that's gonna be, so basically, in training mode? I'm gonna have to set the computer to, I'm gonna have to set the computer to like this? Uh... Uh... Counter hit, normal hit, and teach myself, I won't do it now, cause it's like practice stuff, but teach myself to react to... Like, if it didn't counter hit, go into throw, but if it did counter hit? Fucking... Ah, see, it's tricky. I teach myself to fucking do the, the correct thing. Ah, it's a bit slow. Alright, so that's gonna be part of my training, that's number one, part of my training, add that to the flowchart, teach myself to be able to do it without thinking. Um, alright, that's number one, number two, side turned into jumping spin kick, lol, I didn't know the move. Let's figure out, what move is it? Is it that one? No, is it that one? No. Am I up? Alright, cool, okay, cool. Uh, I don't know what the ranked match bug is, cause I, I don't, I usually don't jump into ranked until a month after I've started playing the game, cause okay, there's stuff like this I need to learn, I need to get my own muscle memory in before I can worry about actual other humans. But um, the, the computer's giving me the business, I put the computer to extra hard, and I'm struggling to beat that, so I'm like, let me beat that first, yeah? Let me, let me, let me start being able to do my combos, fucking in the safety of my own home, then I can worry about that. Does it happen in lobbies as well? What's, what's the bug? What happens? Lobbies are okay, lobbies have been fun. EX high, okay, oh, EX high, am I up? So on normal hit, side turn, and on counter hit, also side turn. You should add PK counter hit. Uh, hold on, PK counter hit, reaction, that one too, very easy to react to, that? Oh, plus 13? Wait a minute, that, what, what do, what's, what's guaranteed off that? What's guaranteed after that, like? That? Is that guaranteed? What's guaranteed? What's guaranteed after that? Yo, who followed me? Give me a second, someone followed me. Sorry, I'm a bad streamer, give me a second. Grand, oh, GrandfDC, what up, player? Thank you, now you follow? Uh, okay, uh, what am I doing? That, that, is that guaranteed? What's, what's the best follow up though? She has three low... Oh, low throw mitts? Nooo! Oh, get fucked, low throw mitts? Oh! Nooooo, that's kinda sick! Oh, hold on. That's, yo, you shouldn't show me that, you shouldn't show me that. Hold on. Itadaki! Damn! Damn! It's a mid throw! That's fucked up, y'all shouldn't show me that! Yeah, we call it a low throw, but it's a mid throw, it's a throw that gets him when they're crouching, yes. Yeah, that's fucked! But yeah, learn to react to the counter hit, yeah, 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 yeah. Get fucked! Yo, we're throwing that in, 13, let's, you shouldn't show me that, bro, I'm about to cook some people, I'm about to cook some niggas, alright, cool, hold on. P plus K? P plus K? Into CH throw, P plus K, CH throw? Hold on, damn, Aggressive got a lab how to beat this shit, yo, I've got, yo, Aggressive? He sent, no, he sent me to a lab so quick, he sent me to the lab so quick, bro. I actually really appreciate playing against Aggressive, cause he showed me how cheap this game can be, it's like, alright, cool, we're gonna, we're gonna need some answers. I'll fuck with that, and also, for you guys watching at home, you see that actually, improving at fighting game is not about just jumping on rank to playing a bunch of randoms, just playing a one person you can't beat, it's pretty useful. I'm playing them constantly and trying to adapt to get to their level is really useful, and really fast. It'll, it'll help a lot, it won't help you with matchup knowledge across the board, but it'll help you with developing your game plan, it's the best, I, I, I really appreciate it, and I, I, I think, and I can see that this, because the player, the VF player base is so, has been so low over the years? The VF community kinda has a lobby culture, you know what I mean? Where lobby's low key kinda the default way to play? Um, and ranked is like a privilege, which I think is more healthy, uh... Yeah, I'm, I'm a big fan, there's a lot about VF, I'm gonna do a whole video talking about all things I love about VF, and it's a long list, but anyway, let me, let me stop gushing. This shit. That's fucked up! What you mean? And look at that, look at that throw, this throw is so sick, look at this one! Ow! Look at, look at the way she covers her face when she gets hit though, like, she, she goes back hard, bro. Ow! Ow! He's like, ow! Yo, look at the way she covers her face when she gets hit, bro! Ow! Ow! This game is sick, anyway, alright, alright, relax, 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 anyway, you throw me off, you throw me off DJ, you throw me off, you throw me off, alright, back on my, back, back on my steeze, where was I? Thing number two, side turn, yeah? Hold on, no, no, what was it? Am I up? Okay, cool. The, a horn is a parenting throw, is it? Am I up? Alright, cool. 21 frames? Plus seven on regular, and side turned? Alright, the most important question is what happens when they block it? When they block it? How fucked am I? I feel like I'm fucked! I feel like a low key I'm fucked! And this doesn't, this doesn't have any like, this doesn't have any like, uh... Evasive properties, right? That's not real. That doesn't have any evasive properties, right? Is that real? Would that work? You reckon? Or am I gonna die? Uh, is that, am I gonna die if I try that shit? I mean... Counter attack? You're good, you're not in Nataku, yeah, but like, hang on. If they block it? Hold on, if they block it, their throw turns into side throw, which is 100% escapable. Oh, I see, 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 yeah, cause there's only one way it can go. Okay, okay, okay? Okay, no on side turn, it takes three frames for a side turn player to evade all guard, so add three frames to whatever it says in the advantage column. Hmm... Okay, I'm, let me worry about, I'll keep that in mind, let me worry about what it gets blocked, always think about worst case scenario first, so like, what can I do? Can I block? I, I can block? So, I'm minus one? Basically what you're saying, right? I'm minus one? It says I'm minus four, but I'm actually minus one, is that what you mean? Or is that, so I take that number as I'm legit minus four? Side turn is pretty advanced, to be honest, I'd worry about that later on, yeah, true, 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 but if I, but the point is, if I'm gonna use this move, I need to worry about it now. If I'm not gonna use this move, then let me know, no, he means if the opposite is side turn, okay, opponent is side turn, got you, got you, got you, got you, got you. Okay, I, 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 I'll worry about that in the future, I understand what you're saying, but help me out, for this level on hit, not on block, oh, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, I understand, I understand. But he, here's my problem. When my opponents block this, how fucked am I? That's my question, right? How fucked am I? Can I fuzzy? Can I fuzzy? Can I fuzzy? Is that the answer? That doesn't, that doesn't look good. Can I, can, that's the question, can I fuzzy? Can I fuzzy? Oh, I got hit by the mid! I can't fuzzy! Can't fuzzy? Can't fuzzy? Turn on throw reaction, what you mean, throw reaction? Throw direction? What do you mean? You cannot, no, you cannot, it's, 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 it's doing, right now, it's doing a mid or a throw. No, I can't, you can't fuzzy, so what's the answer, once it's good, yeah, I'm fucked, so what, what's the answer once it gets blocked? What's the answer? Takes a few from, yeah, yeah, that makes sense. And I can't? Yeah, I feel like I'm, I feel like I'm too vulnerable, I feel like Amayor is a fraudulent move, bro. Under reaction setting, set the guard to counter attack with throw. No, I am, look, guard five is doing throws and mid, it's doing both, it's doing both. Mids and throws, it takes them together. Cause I wanna see both. I wanna see if I can, if I can fuzzy to escape both, but I can't. Right? So my point is, well, you are back turned, Pi, uh, fast jab, one of the four characters with length frame, you should be able to crouch dash. Uh, you should be able to crouch dash backwards, try 9K? What's nine? Up forward? Nah, bro. Wait, wait, what? Wait, what? Nah, 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 it's not, nah, it's not, okay, what about, what's about 3P? Nah, it's not happening. So the point I'm trying to make is I feel like it's a side throw, so it's not real, same direction, throw break every time? Hmm... Okay. So what's, so Marley J, what should I do when this is blocked? What should I do? If you crouch dash away from that position, the 3K will, yeah, exactly, so what's, what should I do? So I'm trying to learn some shit, I see a lot of, uh, high level Pies using this, and I'm like, this seems dangerous, I get the advantage on hit, but on block, how fucked am I? It's saying, but it's saying, yeah, exactly, that's how it seems to me. Just block? Oh, block and I guess throw break forwards? Damn, I'm a bigger than the room, right? Okay. Yeah, okay, cool, so that's the reaction, I gotta... Fuck. So I gotta do that? And throw a guard break forward? Fuck, why's it not working? Okay, so it's, it's gotta be like that, you're minus two after the side throw break, okay, but I can live with that, but look at the, look at the distance, I can live with that. So basically... So basically what I'm saying is I'm, I'm low key kinda safe? Why did that not break? Depends on what leg you have forwards, oh, this fucking game, what you mean? What you mean? Oh my god. So it's not relative, your back is changing direction? Oh my god! I don't believe in this move, bro, side throw attack, I don't believe in this move, bro. I don't believe in this move, what are you practicing? I'm, I'm going through, I'm trying to develop a game plan, right, and I'm being like, okay? When this move is blocked? How fucked am I? Right? What do I do? And what people are saying is just block, because it's not really a mix, I realized I couldn't fuzzy? Cause I'm back turned, right? So it's... It's just like block and like a lazy throw escape, right? But like... Yeah, so I'm, I'm, I'm ki, I'm kinda safe, right? Uh, 4-4K might be a better full circular? Uh... Oh yeah. Hold that. Yeah, I'm gonna look at that in a second, I'm gonna look at that, that's a separate thing. Lazy throw K is probably your best option in guard, hold proper direction, okay? So, okay, so, EX high, yeah, 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 no, I hear you, I hear you, I hear you. Hold that. Hold that. Well, the second one's an EX high. The contradict, no, I already know about this one, I'm gonna look, don't worry, it's on my list, I got a list I'm working my way through, um, but, let me just... Okay. Fuck, someone followed me, not that I sound ungrateful, NYCVF, how you doing, player? Much appreciated. Alright, cool, stance dependent, I understand, alright, cool. Oh, this game, so sick, so complicated, 4-4K is half circular, yeah, the second one, hold on, what about, is, is the second one also half circular? Oh, it only has circular, fuck, okay, look, 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 let's focus, let's focus, everyone focus. So, this? Fuzzy, uh, not fuzzy, sorry, uh, lazy throw escape. Okay, no, I, I need to visually learn which side it is, that's actually not that hard, I can see it, I can see it, gotta practice that, okay, let me just write this down in my little document, okay? Side jump, jumping kick, on block? Equals lazy throw. equals lazy throw escape okay that's a lot of bullshit though for it to block so the question is is the reward on hit worth it so let's talk let's talk on normal hit what am I doing guys what am I doing on normal hit that's what's funny about uh that's what all the funny pies do nine K and hop away while back turned nine K oh trust me to teach why are you trying to teach me the degenerate shit trying to teach me the degenerate I'm trying to learn I'm trying to I'm trying to get solid you're trying to teach me the degenerate shit I'm trying to teach you that shit wee I'm trying to teach you the degenerate shit hang on hang on although I did I did I do need to see if it works I need to see if it works hang on hang on hang on hang on nah look at you trying to get me blown up look at you look at you trying to get me blown up guess I'll throw though to be fair that's how I remember it nine K good back turns fucked up shit look at you child look at you trying to get me fucked up look at this minus ten back turn okay actually maybe from the right range oh trying to get me fucked up alright I'm not gonna learn that shit thank you alright what do we what do we do on hit though what do we do on hit what do we do on hit alright normal hit so what do we get six so what should we do are they guessing what should we do what's the follow up I'm plus six side turn what should we do what should we do is this a real plus six they have to guess right but there's no there's no uh what about if you hit with the just the tip yeah obviously from the tip it's fine oh the range though yo maybe forward forward do it oh four four do it no that's different move or maybe forward forward uh G cancel oh maybe maybe oh I might be doing that at that point you gotta read wow how they wanted to fan okay but like what's the mix though is it is this a mid low mix cuz there's no throw right so is it mid low mix am I making them guess between mistrust and fucking and what's the point all this trouble we've done to go side turn is it literally just to make them guess between the low that tracks sideways and the mid is that is that is that the mix hold on fifteen frames so yeah there's not you can interrupt that you can't borrow that well maybe the ten frame is can actually you can't borrow that so that is that the mix guys is it if this connects make them guess that's that's what I'm seeing two K uh two PK hit throw but that's still a mid though if it's a hit throw it's still a mid right yeah it's still it's still a mid I'm I'm trying to think about from the defender's perspective right if they get hit with this sorry fucked up if they get hit with this they have to guess between the low and mistrust that's that's my takeaway is that correct I'm writing it down if I'm wrong please someone in the comments let me know but like on hit equals mix between big low and yeah that's the high low mix basically no throw exactly there's no throw right so it's it's gotta be she got one B okay so there's other options but it is the lowest seeable the lowest seeable the lowest seeable twenty two frames is seeable relax cuz I don't know about that chief I don't know about that I don't know about that low is there to call out the evade I don't know about that chief I don't know about that chief that's like a snake edge intake no snake edge is like twenty okay basic human reaction type yeah but that's a that's a that's a poor metric being able to differentiate that between uh uh differentiated between alright then again I feel I guess there are a few options in back turn no real mix here you can press G turn to the front and then attack throw twenty two frames is seeable damn y'all are crazy twenty two frames is reactable I think you're crazy but okay there's no mix so why am I doing this for what the fuck am I doing this move there's no mix it's twenty one reactable there's no mental stack yeah exactly the mixups don't really work like that so then what did okay twenty three okay listen listen I've hit you with this yeah Marley J saying there's no mix so respectfully why am I doing this if there's no mix is there really no mix at plus seven it's not gonna normal hit what do you mean it's not gonna normal hit it might normal hit it might check counter hit alright cool you can do anything you want plus ten but I don't have anything so nothing's guaranteed if they're stepping is counter hit okay 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 I hear you I hear you I hear you but you have to understand yeah I'm trying to come up with like a simplified flowchart I'll get good eventually my point is I feel I still feel like I don't have an answer to my question I've hit you with this normal or counter hit whatever I've hit you with this what's the follow up it's not like you know what I mean like what's the follow what what have I earned by hitting this that's what I'm trying to figure out and if you're saying there's no mix then why do this move at all surely there's a mix surely I can force you to guess between something right even if it's like the low or some sort of mid you know what I mean like surely like something like that right but like what's the cuz there's no throw right there's no throw from back turn no classic throw so it has to be mid low right surely and y'all saying it's like uh there's a mix even if the low sweep is seeable the mental stacking VF is extreme okay cool okay cool I'll tell you what I'm gonna do I'm a noob I'm gonna mix between the low and the mid if upon playing this is proven to be ineffective I will change my mind but right now there's I feel like it's big low or slow low if I want to take less risk into bullshit okay back turned to normal stance and throw but it takes three things to go back right how many friends does it take to turn back to normal and their side turn they can turn back in time I don't know I don't know I feel about that delay button still beats evade it leaves them side turns on counter hit beats two P or other high crushes sorry I missed your answer sorry 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 relax Marley J relax relax plus ten side turn they need thirteen frames to block so they'll want to duck if they duck they get launched there is your mix okay okay but like um you've given me one option which is the mid so what's you can't have a mix with one option so what's 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 the alternate thing what if they don't duck can I tag them if they don't duck what's what's the what's the go to again cuz I already was thinking like okay into mistrust that's the mid that's the big risk mid and you have and you have like less risky mids hold on wait hold on you said they take ten hold wait 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 you said it takes thirty frames to block does that mean that's guaranteed middle high middle high okay okay they can't block the high oh thank you that's what I was asking for so the mix is so that's a so you're saying that's a combo so so that's so it's that aha thank you that's what I was asking Marley got you so the mix is like unblockable high so it's unblockable high it's okay so it's it's unblockable high versus mid that's the mix unblockable high the only way to get it under the high is to duck but if they duck they eat list trust okay thank you okay so on hit mix that's not a mix it is a mix cuz you have to think about the defender right you've been hit by this your only option is to stand block or crouch block if you if you stand block you get hit by the punches it's a mix if you crouch block you get hit by the mistrust that's a mix that's a mix right yeah that's still a mix you have to guess think about it from the defender the defender has two options the defender can stand block and get hit by the highs but in crouch block avoid the high and then eat the mid yeah so it's a mix it is a mix it is a mix it is a mix it's unblockable high versus mid so it's a mix so hold on on hit equals oh sorry that's on counter hit though specifically what you mean this DJ don't okay you know what you're pissing me off alright 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 look 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 let's be scientists let's be scientists let's be fucking scientists yeah let's be scientists fuck I'm already fucking up alright cool alright cool okay hold on okay I'm trying to guard counter hit I can't you see I'm not avoiding it hold on wait oh wait hold on see I can't avoid it I can't avoid it I can't avoid it I guess I can't normal hit you can counter hit you can't that was normal hit if their fuzzy is very good they can cover both Marley I'm you're killing me so it's not a mix then if they're covered oh Marley yes I Smiley I love you but why though that it's on a mix that it's on a mix oh why is this game so frustrating what's the mix why would you duck there's no mix so why am I doing this move stop looking for answers I need to look for answers that's who I am bro VF doesn't work that way so then why am I doing this but like I know it's not okay but VF didn't invent the mix up though there's not always a mix so then what's the value of this what's the value of this what is the value to call out your opponent okay I called you out now what I step up for thirty minutes now I had Chad say yes again I'm just these motherfuckers are confusing me I okay okay this might be a learning experience I assumed I catch you with this I get some juice he needs to be plus six or better for a mix I'm plus nine bro that's what I'm saying I'm plus ten Duke Newcom grab a buzz oh my god my eyes are I'm not trying to I know you're no 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 don't my frustration is not with you my frustration is with me bro my frustration is with me it's not with you it's with me it's not a mix if he's back turned chat okay let my chat can't catch a break with these people no no they're helping me they're helping me it's my ignorance that's making me frustrated cuz I don't understand yes I turn on okay Wells help me help me okay hit him with this what's the mix what do I get what do I get I'm back turned I'm plus nine what do I in my okay this in my tech and brain I'm like okay cool I'm gonna hit him with this right the low or the mid that's my understanding but people are saying nah 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 the low is reactable uh it's all fake so I'm like alright cool so there's no mix I'm like yeah there's no mix but some people will be like well there's like there's low key a mix cuz the jab becomes unblockable and I'm like okay that's a mix unblockable and then other people will be like nah it's not unblockable I'm like what's going on what's what do I get on counter hit bro what do I get on counter hit you get plus frames you get to keep pressure none of it's guaranteed okay 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 that is a mix what is a mix hold on cars what is a mix the unblockable high is a mix you're killing me bro you're killing me you get shit no you must get something because even when people say oh you get pressure no cuz pressure means that there's a threat so what's the threat everything they do has an option to call you out yes I get that I get that but there should still be a choice right if they guess wrong they die if they guess right I die but like what's the choice exactly that's not gonna mix this my again tech and player understanding you now have to guess between the low and the mid or that's what I understand they're saying that's not good enough right and then someone someone else is saying that okay if they block this hold on hold on if they get counter hit they can't block the high which is true if they they can't block the high so now the mix is unblockable high versus the mid cuz the only way to get past it is to crouch right uh hold on hold on I can duck right that's a mix people in VF usually think their mixes more like the Taku there's more right if you're able to force fuzzy that buys you a lot of time for nonsense but can you fuzz but you can't fuzzy this surely you can't fuzzy this hold on yeah there's no fuzzy in that I might I guess you can but he's blocking it so that's not a mix he's right it's not a mix hold on yeah you're blocking so that's not a mix oh why is he looking for mix and not taking the guaranteed damage what guarantee forty two I swear you're killing me what guaranteed damage is the guaranteed damage seem like you're looking for a guarantee fifty fifty this ain't the game bro defender has at least two counter options cars I'm gonna slap you out of love okay I know you have a choice right I know you have at least two counter options I understand that okay this is my fault I've not communicated my my thinking virtual fire is very complicated yeah very advanced so what I want what I want is like okay if I hit this move I want you guys to help me figure out what should be my go to options okay now this doesn't mean that these options will be everything it's a fighting game there will always be something that can beat the options but I still want two options on my part that cover the most things right and then if you go okay but the opponent can blank then I go okay then when I encounter when I encounter someone who does the blank then I will do the thing that beats the blank but for the starting out level one I want if I hit you with this I had option one and option two right so back to PK oh it's not guaranteed damage I thought you said jab is guaranteed no it's not someone said that they lied to me so what's my go to when I hit you with this is it mistrust and low sweep or is it something else you got back to PK okay back to PK uh so the first focus back to PK back turn if they start evading low sweep got you this versus this okay now question is there a reason why we're not doing the list trust it's a hit throw also you mean that one so you mean you mean two PK got you okay okay thank you great so oh my god this is only the second out of twelve bro okay so on hit two PK it's a lot safer than K also good okay cool two PK versus two PK hit throw versus low sweep or what's my low or like should we say should we say versus one P well that that seems too slow or she gotta turn around and do it fuck it we gambling fuck it we gambling we're doing the low sweep fuck it we're doing the low sweep we're doing the low sweep fuck it I spent too long on this back turn PK probably catches anything except perfect fuzzy cool 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 back turn PK alright cool one P is good alright cool I'm doing low speed cuz fuck it I'm done but maybe one P one P is the low you want we can look at that maybe one P one P is one of the best moves in the game in my opinion it seems it it seems we're gonna look at that in a second oh shit we got there so next part of the flowchart we hit him with this I don't care if it's counter or non-counter I don't even care anymore hit him with this or into that shit right low kick for evades I think yeah low kick low sweep to catch events got you oh we got that look K number three oh geez Oh, we got there, look, K number three, oh jeez, man. I do love you guys, but like, y'all, y'all, y'all bringing out my anxiety, I'm so scared. Dude, trust me, I feel you, this game language, everything can be a wall at first, it's, ugh, ugh. And also, what's fucked up is like, I actually realized it was side turned into this. So, I completely forgot that was the original thing, so it's actually... No, big love, all of you, all of you, I appreciate you taking, I'm sure it's frustrating for you, watching this fucking idiot over here try and solve this stuff. So I appreciate you having the patience for me, I'm dying, I'm dying, okay, let's go. Jab, size, oh fuck. Oh wait, I'm plus, I'm plus, I'm plus, I'm plus. Fuck, that's plus again. She puts up side turn after that hit, so it's super fucked situation for them to react to lows. I got you. Yeah, yeah, I understand. So it's a good call out move too. No, it's plus. Cause I noticed a lot of players would do this, they would sidestep something and then immediately put them in that situation. Which is pretty good. Cause it's like, a lot of times people will try to sidestep after the sidestep, they see you sidestep, so they sidestep, so you go, bang! How about no? Yeah, 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 I got you, I got you, okay, cool. We got there in the end, next one, number three on my list. Forward, forward, P plus K. What are we doing? On hit? What are we doing? Uh... If people do two P a lot, blocking your jab, it's a good option, instead of a fast mid, I understand, I understand. And also, fucking aggressive pixels can't fucking parry it. I see you, bro, I got answers, I'm learning more and more answers, alright. Hold on. Oh, counter hit, okay, what do I get on counter hit? Ooh, wrong move? Hold on, how do I? I see you aggressive, I see you, I see, you know what's annoying me, aggressive is just silently watching this, taking notes and be like, ah, I got something for you. He's, he's, he's counter labbing, he's labbing what I'm labbing so he can deconstruct that, I see him, bro, he's my rival! Do I get a combo? Do I get a combo? Six-six P plus K, hold four to go into stance? Six-six P, okay, hold four to go, hold four? Hold four, oh, hold back, okay, got you. Okay, yeah, four, it's like four? Like magic four, tech and four, oh, you mean back? Bokuho, oh, boku tai. So, this is, okay, we're talking about things you wanna improve in the new Virtua Fighter, I know they're gonna do it, but this pisses me off. Why does it say I'm fucking minus forty-one? Like, okay, what's the actual frame data? What's, what's, what's the actual, like, my, honestly, when I see these numbers, I go, okay, so never do this move, ever, ever, ever. Minus forty-one? Minus forty-one? What the fuck? Let's go. Okay, so, help me guys, help me, help me, help me, forward, forward, P plus K? Yeah, four-four, I'm plus one, yeah? But if I go into boku tai? If I go into boku tai? What's my go-to? Yeah, it's odd, it's only minus forty-one if you do the full heart animation plays out, I think, yo, what's up Kyoshi? Yo, you, we're watching a lab session and they're driving me crazy while also teaching me. I'm a bad student, I'm a C student trying to get an A. There's probably a thread on VDC with the actual answer. Bro, I'm, I'mma keep it a buck with you, Mari J. All the veterans are like, yeah, you should go to VFDC, it'll really help you out, and I know it's the best website, but like, bro? Going through that thing, exactly, buried from fifteen years ago, I'm like, bro, it's fucking, it's tiring going through that shit, it's so wild, guys. It's so exhausting, and then a lot of the articles, even though there's lots of wisdom, they're poorly translated from Japanese, I'm like, bro? You motherfuckers have about a hundred years to update this shit. And no one, no one fought to like do an update on the translation, just translation! It's wild, cuz, it's wild, it's wild, cuz, I love you, and again, the information is in there, but like, it's, 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 it's tiring, cuz, it's tiring. Okay, so here's my, so minus forty-one, so I guess, okay, so I guess the question is. I, I need to figure out. I gotta figure out. What is this, really? What is this really? And, and like I said, like, like you said, the answer is probably in, uh, the guide. So here's what we're gonna do, we're gonna be boring, we're gonna have, we're gonna have her do it. To be fair, translations are very recent. Really? Cause they look pretty bad, they look like fucking Google Translate twenty-ten, I'm gonna lie. If, if you want, for comedy, we can go through one of them in a second, if you want for pie, cause it was wild yesterday, like, damn. It's kinda wild, it's kinda wild. Like talking about, oh, this string has derivatives, I'm like, what the fuck is a derivative? Oh, you mean follow-ups, then say follow-ups, bro. Derivatives. Jesus. Okay. Um, it's a good low level though, yeah, I get you. Okay, so, six-six, uh, eh, six-six P plus K, boku tai KG is your go-to anti-two P burn. So is it like, so if I, so basically, if I hit you with this and go into boku tai? You are in a situation, like you have to, you have to guess, is that what you're saying? And if you guess wrong, you die. Because if you step, you get caught with that, right? Uh, if you die in dictation, you get caught with that. And there's a combo, right? If you, if you crouch block? Hold on, you crouch block? You call it out? Okay. Is there, uh, is that situation, is there a move that lets you just get out the whole situation for clean? In fact, I saw one, actually, I saw one, I saw one. I saw a motherfucker go... Hold on, input. Oh, I'm pressing down forward. Alright, cool. Wait. Oh, K plus G, K plus G, K plus G. Alright, cool. Unless counter hit, it's good low level though, P, okay, so let's talk. Okay. Okay? Pretty good, pretty good? Get fucked? Okay? Oh. Okay, it's awkward, it's awkward. But there's answers. Ooh. Seventeen will catch it. Okay, so there's an answer to this one. Okay, that's, that's a good one. Okay, so that gets caught. Does that also work on, does it also work on this? Damn, it's worse than ALP, aggressive, you know what it is? It's bokuho, it's Leo's bock, it's bokuho! It's fucking Leo's bokuho! Oh, P is a frame trap. Thank you, that's what Molly J was trying to say, frame trap, frame trap, frame trap. So you gotta respect it, you gotta respect it. Damn. Hold on. Okay, twelve frame doesn't beat it. Twelve frame doesn't beat it. Oh, eleven frame jab beats it. Eleven frame jab, privilege. So level, eleven frame jab will beat it, only four characters have it, but also, the eleven frame jab is gonna get beaten by, uh, a lot of other options, so... So if your fastest move is twelve frames, you gotta hold it. If the fastest move you have is twelve frames, you low key have to hold the jab. But then again, you can crouch, right? Oh, it's mid, it's mid, it's ready, can't crouch. And it staggers, oh fuck. Layers, exactly, Mr. Neff, layers of the lasagna, okay, okay, so you gotta hold it. So my default answer, that's cheap, you gotta hold it, you gotta hold it! I don't, lol. Use it more, a hundred percent, Jerry, that's cheap! Use it more, do it again, yeah, a hundred percent, alright, cool, 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 we're learning, we're learning, we're learning, so, we're learning. So, my default answer should be, my default answer should be, the P, hit him with the P. Lol. So, hold on. Hold on, what else is there? Don't ever do that. P on its own and take the stagger, just do P on its own and take the stagger? Got you. P on its own, take the stagger. What do, what do I get when they don't stagger, cause no one, bro, you know no one's breaking staggers at our level, what do I get? Is that it? Oh! Hold that, is that it? That'll do, that'll do, that'll do, that'll do, don't care, that'll do. That'll do, don't care, that'll do! Hold that, okay. So, let's write this down, so, on hit equals. Should my default, oh, then also, I should have the confidence to not do it, right? Not do anything, fuck. Okay, so on hit, it seems fine, so, on hit equals, uh, bock, P? Go home in here. Bock transition. Empty bock, I'm not doing the empty bock, bro. So J O Zinks, I did. Uh, empty bock into, sorry, bock transition, fuck you in my head, rough, I had bock transitioned into bock P. Alright, cool, that's the, okay, what's the alternative? What beat, what beats that? What beats that? I'm guessing sidestep? I'm guessing sidestep beats that, right? Pretty clean? Hold on. Not real. Am I, oh, oh! Plus twelve though! What do I get when I'm plus twelve, bro? What do I get when I'm plus twelve? Hold on, already got the mind games, fifty-six, a hundred percent. What do I get when I'm plus twelve? Alright, let me not, let me not confuse it, let me not confuse it, let me not confuse it. So, essentially, so, the way to beat that would be the sweep, right? So... KG? Does that beat, oh, good question, does that beat the step? I don't think that beats the step, might though. Nah, oh, last hit! They get caught, oh! Doesn't matter what side, they get caught. You won't block. No, it's, it's linear, it's linear. The, hold on, the plus twelve back turned KG? The plus twelve back turned KG guaranteed? Say it ain't show, bro. Oh, no, it doesn't, huh? Why is that guaranteed? Why is that, why is that guaranteed? Help me! Cause they have to, cause they have to add thirteen, cause they have to add three frames, is that why? Cause they have to add the three things to turn around, or to block, is that why? Is that why? Is that why, I'm understanding, are the pieces slowly falling into my head? Twelve plus three, oh, I'm learning, bro! Oh, I'm learning, bro! Hold that, hit him with the list trust! Hold that, long combo. Hold on, side turn takes three, back turn takes six, sweep or delay PK from bock? Delay PK from bock? Or sweep? Adds fourth frame from back turn, thank you. Damn, these numbers, bro. Yeah, they're back turned, alright, cool, 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 well, I'm back turned. Oh, man, oh yes, cause they were side turned, and then they get slapped back turned, that's why they were doing it! Yes, that's why they were doing it off the side turn, okay, now, again, the value of this move is slowly falling into my brain. Side turn into that, back turn, damai? Six-five, yeah, I'm not arguing, all I, all I heard is that that shit's guaranteed, that's all I care about. So... Hold that, list trust! If you side turn the other way, you won't get back turned, alright, got you, I gotta, I gotta pay attention to which way I'm going? Yeah, oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, got you. Alright, cool, 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 it's all coming together, so hold on, so my man is saying, Molly J is saying... Alright, Molly J is saying... Delay, so, hold on, let's see if I can delay it enough, hold on. Hold on, I'm so dead. Alright, let's see, that's a lot of low. Black and block though. I don't like that. Nine plus six, and you have to guess. You have two evade towards pays back for back turn, okay. I think I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go with the sweep, I'm gonna go with the supermarket sweep, until they block it. So that's what we're gonna do, we're gonna, on hit, it's bock, P, and low sweep. If they block, uh, when he finds the move, lol. If they block it? If they, today we'll discuss, lol. Does VF have any safe launches? It's got some safe counter hit launches, it probably does have unsafe launches, but we'll get there. KSRD, yes, yes! Goes four-six P, yes, no, it does, um, I know that, uh, yeah, they've definitely got some, Light's got some. Um, on here, and on block, you just fucking die, you just fucking die, I guess. I'm not gonna worry, loads, I just die, whatever, I don't care about that, if I'm getting a blow, then, you just gotta live with it. And then I guess if they block, I can go into like, I can start doing like, cancel! If they're reacting to it, I'm just gonna like, psych. Hold on. Oh, you're not, you're not in whilst standing? Okay, cool. Alright, cool, alright, alright, we're getting there. Okay, that was just number three, fuck, how long have I been, how long have I been streaming? Fucking two hours, bro, okay, cool, 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 alright, next, next, number four. Wide kick, bokuho threat, sidestep. Wide kick, boku, oh, I know the wide kick, um, that one. So... Nope, nope, that one, back, uh, four cap. So, wide kick, I like that, I mean, I see it, and I go, okay, I don't know what the input is, I'm just gonna describe it and then go in, wide kick. What is minus six? Okay, what is minus fifty? Okay. Okay, okay. Okay, alright, what are we doing? Alright, minus fifty, never do it, bro, never do it, hold on, what was this one? What was this one? Forty-one, okay, okay, so, ten frames more. I learn all them Chinese names, lol. So in this one, this is interesting, cause I'm minus six technically, in the Taku, slightly minus. Well, no, cause minus six, they can, they can do some shit. Oh, oh, you mean, you mean that, you mean, minus fifty, slightly minus, alright, so, here's a question. Should I implement this move, yes or no, is it worth it? Let me work it? Or is it just no bueno? Like what is seventeen frame? Half circular? Okay? Um, what is the value of this move? Should I be implementing this into my game? It's only, it's a, it's a only half circular mid, it's pretty good for calling out steps. So this is a utility move, this, so this isn't a stop offense move, this is a utility move. Yeah, so it's like, so, again, I'm looking for starting offense moves. We can, we can add utility for specific situation, but like, this is like, I'm starting the offense, we're neutral, I wanna put my opponent in a situation, this isn't it. That's what I'm saying, cause they can, they can just blow me up, that's what it seems like. So we're gonna move on from this, I don't, I don't believe in it. What if, okay, what if? What about this though? Oh, I got fucked. Okay, not that one. Oh, fuck. Yo, bokuho is kinda, kinda clean, you know? Hold on. Forty-three. Forty-three. So it's actually forty-three. So forty-three is just like. Hold on. Oh, fuck, I gotta write this down. So what was this? That was forty-one. Forty-one equals only beaten by eleven frame jab. Forty-one equals P only beaten by eleven frame jab. Man, why I gotta be a scientist, bro? Beaten by eleven frame jab. So if we then say. So if we're then saying that. Forty-three. So it can be beaten by, it's two frames slower, so it can be beaten by thirteen frame. So forty-three can be beaten by three frames. So a thirteen frame will beat that. In theory. If I've understood it correctly. No, I think I prefer. I think I prefer that, yeah. Okay, cool. We're done wide kick. We've done wide kick. Alright, cool. Next, backward forward KG on oki. Uh, there's nothing to lab here. That's just a good thing to do on oki. We'll work on oki next week. Oki will be next week's thing. I'm not really worried about that right now. Um, side turn, PK, buck. Okay. Alright, hold on. Oh, thirty-seven. Oh, you got to guess. You got to guess. That's fucked up. Thirty-seven. You got to guess, bro. That might be, that's someone uninterruptible shit. That's, that's uninterruptible shit. Yeah, that's uninterruptible shit. I kinda like that. Yeah, PK to bokuho is really strong, especially on side turn. What is it on? What is it in, what is it in the face? What is it in the face? If you're just, if you're just standing there? Forty-five. So even on block is pretty good. On block is pretty good, but there's options. And then on hit, on hit, you just gotta, you just gotta hold it. Oh, yeah, on hit, you, it's uninterruptible, bro. You have to guess. So we're back into the bokuho situation. Okay, I don't know AOE's launches, to be honest. I'm bad with it. Okay, cool. Let's go. Yeah, we're not trying to help AOE players here, bro. Fuck them. Fuck them all. Alright, so side turned. So I still don't know if I want to do side turn this. Or side turn. They both seem pretty good. I'll, 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 I'll experiment. I'll experiment. Oh shit, there's another one. There's another one. There's another one. Hold on. Hold on. Nah, it's not good. Nah, I don't believe it. We're gonna, we're gonna get rid of that. Don't believe in that. Don't believe in it. Don't believe in it. A bokuho type PP might be able to beat your sidestep and force you to check the situation. Nah, she's fucked. She's fucked. She's actually more fucked. Oh. Yeah, she's fucked. You know how fast it launches? Stop aggressing. Stop helping. We're not doing aggressive. We're not looking at fucking. We're not looking at fucking, uh, AOE shit. We're not helping her. Stop helping the ops. Hold that. Oh, oh. Okay, cool, 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 cool. Alright, bet. Uh, so we're gonna, we're gonna rub this one out. It's out. I'm trying to get good chat. Sorry, bro. Look, take that shit somewhere else. Lol. Nah, I'm kidding. Alright, next one, three P. Everyone's telling me this move's godlike. Why is this move godlike? I heard you can fucking, if you cancel it, the frames are better, but how much better? So why is this? What's my go-to when I, when I hit you with this move? Is my go-to full charge? Is my go-to, uh, uh, charge cancel to throw? What's my go-to? Three P bokuho? Forty-nine. It's not that great. Not that great. Hold on, someone followed. Who followed? Who followed? Who followed? Kidna. What up, Kidna? Thanks for following. Much love. Uh. Minus forty-nine. It's not that great. It's not that great. I don't think that should be my default. I think, uh. I don't think that should be my default. But like. What up, Kidna? What up? We're learning Pi, or more accurately, we're learning some Virtua Fighter in general, but Pi specifically. So yeah, everyone talks about this move. Everyone respects this move, but I don't understand it. What? When you get hit by this move, especially if any of you veterans are here, what are you scared of? What's big? Why do you hesitate? Are you scared of getting clocked by this? Uh, long range low. It's a long range low. They're still safe on block. Plus on counter hit. That sounds good by itself. So I'm just doing it for damage. I'm doing like a poke? Like I'm doing it and then, and then going back into neutral? Is that the plan? Is that the plan? Is that the plan? Three P is good as a low mix-up annoying poke. It's a good option to select against quick rise and non-quick rise. Where you can sidestep afterwards as well. But like, again, I understand that there's many options, but what would you say is like, okay, this should be the first thing that you do? And here's the second thing you do. And we can add more layers, because obviously there's options you can beat it. So should we say it's like? Hold on. Should we say it's like into, into, into throw? Alright, hold on. I can't even do the cancel, probably. That's the first option. Low into throw. And then if they start. How would they beat that? They'd have to dick jab. And if they start dick jabbing. Kill them. Three P into bokuho options. Three P into crouching, four P. Crouching, four P? Oh, I keep forgetting about that move. Uh. Hold on. Like that? Hold on. Oh. Like that? Fuck up. Okay. Don't forget, this is VF. Loads look like they're a privilege to have. Uh, yeah, yeah. But I'm just trying to work out, like, again, I wanna come up with a level one. Like, this is, these are the two options I do. And only when they demonstrate that they can get past these two options that I then have to worry about the rest of the Yomi. I'm trying to work out what are the options. So should I say that the first one is? Uh, you're, so you're saying that the option should be into bokuho? So you're saying it should be like bokuho P? Or? Or, hold on. Uh. Oh, fucked up. Nope. Oh, it's awkward. Ah. That. Instant from crouch inputting. Uh, that's why everyone kinda hates dealing with this move. Okay. He's a GameCube controller, yes. Oh, yes, on this channel, Levelless. I don't know what Levelless is. You mean a GameCube controller? Yeah, quote? Shout out to Javeda, GameCube controller. I was like, he on, for those of you who don't know the joke, literally, I went on his stream and he had like a fucking GameCube controller on the screen. I'm like, oh, you use GameCube controller? And he was like, yes, I use a GameCube controller. That's why my movement and taking it so crisp. I was like, oh, I see. GameCube. I don't know what you're talking about. Cheat box, what are you talking about? Oh, you mean a GameCube controller? Kappa? Kappa? Anyway, help me. Stop talking about Levelless controllers, bro. Help me. What's my go-to? Are we saying that this is bokuho shit? I should always default to bokuho? That seems dangerous. That seems dangerous, bro. Let's go. Interrupted. Interrupted. Okay. Interrupted. Not happen. Okay, cool. So I don't, I don't like, I don't like that until I've, I don't like doing that until they've demonstrated that they're gonna pause. So what should the option be? Oh, it's plus. Oh, it's plus. Oh, she's plus. That's it. That's it. That's it. Yeah, I take it back, take it back. I, I don't know why I'm talking. It's plus, it's plus, it's plus, it's plus, it's plus. Oh, maybe it's not plus. Okay, maybe not plus, but it's close. Oh, maybe it's not close. What the fuck? Yeah, it's not plus. It's not plus. So what should the follow-up be? So what should the follow-up be? Again, I, I, again, forgive my ignorance. I don't understand the power of this move. Like you're saying, okay, it's a good low, but like it's only a little bit of damage. It's a little bit of damage on the low, not that much. Twelve damage. Again, sidestep. So just this into sidestep is the, is the, is the advantage? So just sidestep. If they try and poke afterwards, sidestep beats it. If they try and poke, okay, yeah, fair enough. So the threat is, so, so what? You're saying the threat should be this into bokuho or this into step? It doesn't seem right. I don't know that. I don't know that I believe in that. I know it's a taku. They can start going for pressure. You can sidestep in the taku. Okay, okay, okay. I'm so confused. I'm so confused. So we're saying that this into sidestep? And I don't know if I believe in it, bros. I don't know if I believe in it. Nope, nope. Nope. I gotta practice it from this side. No, gotta press down. Oh, God. Nope. Okay. Yeah. That was a bit slow. That's very slow. Alright, cool. Fuck. It doesn't, doesn't even beat that. What's happening? What's happening? Okay. Good call. I'm being slowed to hit back? Okay. Ah. Fuck my low. Oh, my God. Ah. Oh, why am I so bad? Ah. Ah. Oh. It seems very slow. It seems like. The recovery seems quite slow. Evading takes longer to recover. Yeah, so maybe it shouldn't, so the, so maybe it shouldn't be. So y'all, some of you were saying that the sidestep should be the option. I don't know that that's the option. So if you're recording, it'll act different. So maybe it's. Oh, my gosh. Again, I, I, I wanna come away, this was actually the, I should have put this number one, because this is actually the number one thing I wanted to figure out by the end of this video. Cause I noticed that everyone respects this move and I don't know why they respect it. I don't know what they're scared of. Some of you are saying, well, it's just a good low poke with glued range. I'm like, okay, but like, I could take a hundred of each. Look at the damage. Like, okay, surely the scary thing should be what can come next. Three PP is quite delayable. So they're scared of the high? That's what you're saying? So the, so the threat of this comes from the, from the, the string follower? That's a, that's a threat? Because then it seems to me that they should just crouch, right? EX high will go over their head. Does she have three carry? Uh, yeah, she does. This. EX high. Yeah, it is an EX high. So it'll, so it'll go over their heads. So there's no mid. It's a high-high. That, that, this is the point. Uh, uh, kaze yante, that's why I'm so scared. I, I, that's why I'm so confused. Cause I'm like, all, all the follow-ups are highs, just crouch. They don't down jab. Yeah, so you just, so just crouch. High. EX high. Just crouch. So is that why they freeze? Cause they have to respect the high? So it's a bit like this. They're waiting for the follow-up high. It's a timing mix? So they're scared of the follow-up high? So they're like, they're like, they're like fuzzying or whatever? And you kill them? Bit of a mix. Mostly thumb though. Oh, no. You're talking stick shit. Uh. Yeah, I don't know. I don't know. Uh, if they wait for the follow-up high, they get hit by bokuho P. But bokuho is so, like, I, I can see bokuho. I can see it. So then now they're in the mix. They lose frames if they crouch though. The fact they don't dick jab you is huge. Right? So, okay, so what you're saying is, I'm hearing what you're saying. So what you're saying is, the threat of this comes from the fact that they have to respect the highs, which is why they freeze up, right? And it's my knowing that they'll freeze up that makes it powerful. Cause I can do this into crouch throw or like this into whatever, right? That's what you're saying. Or like... Uh... This into mids. Or like... This... Or like this into that. Hold on. Oh, you're not forcing crouch? Wait, why aren't you? Uh... Uh! The point is that they have to react to the situation because they're mentally stacked. The opponent either needs to react right away, which makes them open to getting sidestepped... Or delayed. Can't sidestep. That's another part. It's, it's jailing. You can't sidestep. Oh, you can. Never mind. You can. You can. But if they try and sidestep, if they try and sidestep, you can, you can hit them with the... Got you. Okay, cool. Okay. I think, I think, I think I understand the mix. So what you guys are saying, forgive me if I'm repeating myself over and over and over and over again, but I gotta understand this and this is not written anywhere, at least not that I've seen. So... The power of this... The power of this comes from... Hold on. Like a low, yeah, I don't know, okay. The power of this comes from the threat of the high. The best thing to do defensively is to crouch. Crouching keeps you the safest. It's the safest thing you can do. And because I know this, you can't dick jab. You get caught. Well, you can, but it's a risk, right? So... And you have this. If they crouch for too long... They get clapped by this. Right? And that, that breaks their guard. So that's the mix. And because they are waiting to see what will come high, what will come next, this is higher level stuff because they know this string, they're respecting it. Therefore, I can use their respect against them and go to Bokuho. Because by the time they've seen Bokuho, they already have to guess. So that's the mix. Does that sound correct? They 2P, Bokuho KG gets them. Yeah, yeah, they're dead. Or dick jab them. Right. Or just dick jab them. Well, no, dick jab gets, dick jab gets blown up. Dick jab, that beats dick jab. And that beats dick jab. Oh, hold on. And I die. So the optimal move is like, so the optimal move is like crouch and then the second you see Bokutai, sidestep. I don't think this is real. "We have a new VF player who is angry because he feels like he only plays better when he's just mashing." "What he's failing." Some sort of, what? You're talking about me? What are you talking, what the fuck are we talking about? What are you talking about? What, what's happening? What's happening? "We have a new VF player who is angry because he feels like he only plays better when he's just mashing." "What he's failing to see is that some sort of mental stack you're struggling with. This game wants you to make the next call." What are you talking, bro? What are you talking about? No one wants to mash. I just wanna understand the situation. I wanna understand what my defender has to deal with. No one's asking to mash, bro. I just don't understand why you should be scared of this. In order for me to understand this move, I have to understand what the defender has to do. That's the hard part. And like, it seems to me that this whole situation is avoidable. Right? The Bokuho stuff is, I don't know what bro's talking about. I don't know. But like, so you can avoid, so the Bokuho thing seems fake, right? To me, it seems fake, okay? And like, this? That? Okay, hold on. Right. So... Okay. Oh, this, it's a slow, it's a slow mid. It's up for a while. Okay. Oh, that's weird. That's awkward. So you have to really commit to ducking. Got you. That's important. Oh, that's hard. What about... I think it's a mind game? Yeah, I think it's a mind game too, but I need to know the pieces of the mind game. What am I scared of? What is the threat? Oh! No. No. I don't know, bro. I think it's, I think it's adjustable. I don't believe in it. I can react to the Bokuho and I'm slow as fuck. I don't get it. I really don't get it. I think it's a mind game. I don't, I don't, I don't, uh, I, I, I don't, oh, I forgot about the 3P charge. That's part of the mind game too. Yeah, but it's slow. I don't get it. I don't get, I, I, and the thing is, I, I'm not complaining about the move. I'm complaining about my own ignorance. I don't see the power of it. It'll beat the sidestep. It'll beat the sidestep? Oh, the charge looks like Bokuho. The charge looks like Bokuho. Got it. The charge looks like Bokuho. Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. I see, I see, I see. The charge with that Bokuho. Okay, that's an important detail. The charge looks like Bokuho. So in a weird way, so in a weird way, okay. Man, I should fuckin' write this on the, on the Discord. So, okay. Again, for those of you who are super bored, forgive me, but this is, normally I would do this off-stream, but like, this is important stuff. Okay. Ah, all the options suck with them, yes. So you do this... You do this and you immediately have to be scared of the follow-up high... Circular... And Bokuho. And there's nothing you can do that can beat all of them. There's nothing you can do that can beat all of them. So you're scared of Bokuho? You scared of Boku, you scared of, you scared of full charge? You scared of full, so you scared of full charge? Scared of Bokuho? Okay. Stands entrance kills frame to try and bait sidestepping. Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, I understand. I understand. Phew, okay. Yeah, you gotta choose an option fast. I get it, I get it. See, that's the thing. Everyone's saying it's a mind game, I'm like, "Okay, but between what? What are the other?" I don't understand what's ho, I need to, maybe I'm a bit pedantic, but I need to understand what's going on in the mind of my opponent. What are they trying to do and why can't they do it? Because in my mind, I'm like, "Well, if that's a high, and that's an EX high..." "Oh, sorry, and that's an EX high. Just fucking crouch. It's not that hard." I'm like, "Okay, but there's mids. Okay, but the mids are slow. Can't you sidestep them? It's like, well, actually, no, because the mid that you need to sidestep, one will, that's, you can try to sidestep the mid, but if you're wrong, and..." "That'll get you." And if you're right, you can avoid, and if you just stand there, that'll get you. So it's a four-dimensional, it's almost like a four-dimensional mix. Where it's like, it's, it's, it is mid-low-fast-low. Well, is it, there's no, yeah, I guess, yeah. I'm, I'm rambling. I'll, I'll find a more efficient way of writing it, but I, I understand the mix now. I understand what people are scared of. And then there's also the fact that you can just fucking, uh, hold on, you can just fucking, a higher level, you can just fucking, uh, into nothing. Yeah. I understand. Yeah, this is, this is a fucked up mix. Now that I understand all the options, yeah, I get it. So then what should the options be? Uh, let's, let's start, again, we're at low level. It's 40, yeah, it's 40 chance. It's lit, it's literally, um, space and time. You're fucking with space and time. The delay and/or the level. High or mid. I get it now. I get it. So, the real options here, I think, are... Scary standing mid. Delay mid, which looks like the other one. Uh, that to beat dick jab. And if they're just gonna stand there, and if they're just gonna stand there... Fresh, pressure. Yeah, got you. That's why they freeze up. Understood. Understood! So, again, because I'm a noob, I want to find what should my go-to options be. I think my go-to options should be... Again, I'm dealing with noobs, so... Um, I think... And then, how do they beat that? They can just be, they can just beat that by crouching, right? Or dick jabbing. Okay, so here's my, here, here are my options. You ready? I know it's taken about an hour to get here. Here are my options. I think I'm, my default is gonna be... That, to beat dick jab. Big reward on beating big jab. And I'm gonna default to... That. Just jab pressure. I forgot about that, too. That's fucked up, too. Fuck, yeah. What is that on block? Yes, okay. Also, is that a true string on counter hit? Great question. Great question. You know what? I'll do it myself. Aw, fucked up. Oh, I fucked up the recording. Yeah. Okay. Okay. I think I'm gonna go for, cuz I'm a, cuz I'm a pussy. And I'm gonna go for... My default will be... No, not that. Too risky. Ah! Ah, too risky! No! I cannot record. Oh, my god. I'm so sorry. I'm sad at this game. Nope. That. Okay, plus, okay, they're, oh, they're plus seven though. Back and finish it. Okay. We can work out jab pressure. Alright, cool. So, we're gonna do... We're gonna do that. We're gonna do that. And, okay, so it's gonna be 1, alright, on-hit equals 1P... 1P into jab pressure, into jab shit. And then, and... 1P into Bokuho. And cancels. Hmm, okay, that's gonna be that. I'm not really gonna worry about count here. Unblock, I just die. Whatever. Unblock, cuz it's a low. Oh, man, this is taking fucking forever, this game. Oh, man, okay. And also just my lack of understanding. So, my go-to is gonna be... Cuz I like that string, or... Into whatever. Yeah. If they mash, yes, that's gonna be it. It's gonna be this. If they start mashing or dick jabbing, then it's gonna be... That, cuz that'll counter the dick jab. Is that what you did for seven? Is this what you did for seven? No, no. I didn't know, I didn't know enough about seven. Seven, I was used to fighting games, but now, when I went to street fight, this is what I did, yeah. Okay, let's see. Um... What do you wanna test? Recording, not recording. CPU setting. Please, picture. Uh... Hold that. Hold that. Yeah, you're, and you're dead. Nope. Nice, okay. That's gonna be my default. Hold that. Yes, cool. And the way they would beat that, I imagine... Oh, that's jailing! Oh, wait a minute! Don't tell me that's jailing! Oh, you, you niggas didn't tell me that was jailing? That's not, that's not jailing. Oh! Nice, 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 oh, Jesus. Oh, I was about to say. Nah, it's not jailing. About to say. Yeah, it's not jailing. Yeah, okay. Cool. So if they start doing that, then I'm gonna hit him. I'm gonna kill him. Then I'm gonna kill him with fucking... Oh, fuck. Oh, you can't dick jab it. Oh, tough. Find the, find the layer. Must've been awkward. Oh, tricky. Ah! What am I looking for? Uh... Yes, I know. Good fun. Yeah, yeah, that's my option. Alright, cool. That's my answer. People are ducking under everything, lol. Yeah, it's true. People are ducking under, I know it's that dick jab, which is why all of my plans right now, cuz I'm at low levels, like, how do I beat dick jab? Everything I'm planning is like, how do I beat dick jab? Yeah, okay, cool. Those are my options. So, again, to summarize, for those of you who have suffered through this boring-ass part of the thing, my options are... Fucking go here, and people who dick jab too early, just... Kill them. Just fucking kill them. Alright, cool. Oh, number nine! Oh, Jesus. God, Christ. Uh... PK buck? Punch kick buck? Jump question? Fuck that, we're not doing that. It's too long. Crouch dash throw into 6KG if they tech? Uh, oh. Uh, let's do random. Okay. Fuck. How do I know which side I'm gonna be on? Yeah. Yeah, hold on. "You learn too much, Chad. How can the lobby stand a chance against you, bro?" We'll see, man. This is just how I learn. I'm a nerd. I'm a nerd. I like to know stuff. I think too much. Change the full recovery? Yeah, 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 I was thinking the same thing. Full recovery, full recovery? Side roll, exact? Side roll back, exact? To what? To what? Okay, I get it. Damn, well, how do I know what side it's gonna be on? I'm trying to do, eh, the input is backwards, forwards, okay? But the camera switches, so I don't know what side it's gonna be on. Hold on. Nope. Fuck. Oh, almost. Nope. Yes! Way coming to plus four! That's what we're trying to do. Yes! Don't tech against me! Yes! It's real. It's real. Don't tech. Don't tech! I can't even do the throw. Alright, cool. Can practice that on my own time. Alright, that's cool. Next? Mid, slow extension for steppers? What is that? What's that one? Yeah, that move's fucked up. What do I get? Yeah, that keeps catching steppers. Hold on. What do you got? Find the layer? What do you got? Fight the layer? Can't play that much. You have to set the bot to counter hit or sidestep if you wanna see your oki timing is real. Yeah, well, again, okis for another day, I just wanted to see if it was kinda real, we'll figure it, we'll, we'll work out the specifics. I'm already two hours in, almost three hours, I'm gonna need to, oh, oki's gonna take a whole other fucking video. Alright, cool. Mian show jailing on block, alright, let's talk. This is, this is the one I wanna see. This is, not enough fucking pi players do this, and I feel like this might be real, but no one, I don't know if people believe me. This shit? This shit seems kinda cash money. Oki is gonna take days, a hundred percent, sorry, bro. I'll do it off-stream, I'll do it in my own time. I gotta, I gotta figure that shit out. Oh, okay, 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 no. What, what move did I just fucking do? Oh, mian show, mian show, mian show, mian show. Jailing, it's jailing. It's, it's legit jailing. Plus one, okay. Okay, cool, plus one. I should abuse this move. Oh, I'm side turn! Yo, side turn plus five. Oh, but the range is a bit fucked, though. What do you get? What do you get? What do you get? These are the, these are the questions. This, this shit just seems like free damage. Oh, I'm back turned, though. Sounds like that, sounds like the other situation before, where it's like, alright, cool, you gotta guess. Oh, wait, hold on, I fucked up. Good damage, on its own. Even if nothing else guaranteed. I gotta lap that. What reaches? Ooh! Ooh! Okay. It's, they might be followed, we'll figure it out. Alright, okay, okay, okay. Alright, I feel like that's enough for today. Oh, okay, alright, let's go and watch some more games, and then we'll call it a stream. Oh, man. Alright, I'm learning, slowly but surely, slowly but surely, this game, this fucking game. Okay, okay, okay. Let's watch some more games. Oh, fuck, it's 137, Jesus Christ. Oh, man, this game. That move is plus 10 on counter hit? Sheesh! Sheesh! Wait a minute, plus 10? What do I, what do I get? What do I get? What's for Christmas? So then, should I just do that, and then just take my plus 10? And I make him guess? Is that better? So I like this on block, I'll be honest. Even though I get less on counter hit, I kind of waste the counter hit. I kinda like that. Plus one, jailing. This isn't, this seems like free damage. Just fucking throw it out whenever you want. Like, there's very little risk. I just don't know what I do here. You know what I mean? Maybe that, maybe it's that. Do that shit. Little bit of that, nothing, nothing too crazy. Yeah, maybe. Alright, cool, we figured it out, we figured it out. Yeah, I appreciate that, plus 10 on counter hit, good to know. Good to know! Alright, cool, next. I think they can duck that since it's only plus 10. No, 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 they're, they're, those punches, they're jailing, it's jailing, I tested it, they're jailing. You can't duck it. If the kick gets you, normal hit or counter hit, they can't duck it. Which is why I like doing the whole string. But it's a low that can be ducked. No, we watched this one. Alright, what's next? Brad Burns, I don't know nothing about Brad Burns, go lap this motherfucker, too. Cameron and Yan Chan are the most fun pies to watch, in your opinion? I'll keep that in mind. Oh, hold that. Hold that, that. Okay, he didn't do anything with it. Let's go. Oh, I don't do that either. That seems rather risky, though. Nice. Okay, let's look, let's look at that again. Uh, down forward one, uh, uh, three, sorry, 3P. Okay, dick jab. 3P, cancel into crouch, into dick jab, okay, interesting. I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep making mental note of what they do, should see if I can fucking understand it. Am I up? Damn, see, he went for the mistrust, he went for straight raw mix. Sidestep, am I up? Guess. Went for the mistrust, guess wrong. And I guess he was relatively safe, safer than he would've been. Damn, that move's good, too, that move's good. Now that you showed me that that leads to fucking counter hit grab, that shit's, uh... That shit's cash money. That shit's cash money. Okay, let's go, hold on, wait, 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 let's go, continue. Bro is wild, no, yo, nah, it's not, bro. You're wrong, incorrect, use your ears, bro. Cap up. Bro, pie, you play Shandee, shut the fuck up, RB. Shut the fuck up, you play Shandee, don't give me, ugh, don't come here saying, ugh, when you play Shandee. Shut the fuck up, bro. Fuck outta here. How you gonna do that? How you gonna play Yoshimito and then bitch about Leo? Fuck outta here, bro. You don't do that. Alright, let's go. Shun is a cutie. Shun is a war crime. Alright, tomorrow we're gonna do lobby, hey, where have you been? You been ducking my lobbies? Been ducking my noob lobbies? Come on, man, tomorrow we're gonna do lobbies, today's been a lab in session. Let's go. Although, by the way, if any of you watching are veterans, here's what you should do for content, real talk. Y'all should do, I had a great idea, but I'm not qualified for it, I called it every round of painting. You do the playback speed at 50%, and you just fucking explain what the fuck is going, what the fuck is going on. For us noobs, you just explain what the fuck is going on, like, okay, that, what was that choice? You know what I mean? Okay, that was a count, I know that's a counter hit low, she was looking for it, she didn't get it, now she's minus. She got counter hit there, jab, plus two, oh, sorry, plus, uh, yeah, plus two, into throw. You know what I mean? Just, just explain the thought process. Okay, wake up, what's wake up kick on hit? You know what I mean? Okay, so what's going through both their heads? Alright, next. She suspected that she'd hesitate, she went for the catch throw, she was wrong. Homestory cur, ping pi, lol. Slow break? Catch throw this time, you know what I mean? Someone going through it in slow motion would be very useful for me. I can do it, I'm not qualified, but like an expert, you should. That's, yo, you're minus 13, so she kind of knew a throw was coming next, so did she successfully break the throw? No, she did not. Neutral throw. Alright, she went for the Oliver twist, it whiffed, sidestep, they're blocking. Broke the neutral throw, let's go. She saw this sidestep coming, caught him with the spinning circular, full circular. Fucking back forward, uh, K plus G on wake up, so now she, uh, now Vanessa's minus four, let's see what she does. Sidestep, I don't know why Pi jumped, I don't know, I don't know what that's about. Okay, I guess the follow-up worked. Straight up mix. Oh, she whiffed the forward forward nine. That doesn't launch, that launches on counter hit, not recovery counter hit, so probably could've gone for a better move, but it's fine, it moves really fast. Uh, a bar raid, jab again, through, that was a very confident move, actually, now I think about it, she got jabbed twice. Counter hit jabbed twice. And then still went, okay, she's not gonna do anything, I'm gonna grab you. What kind of madman does that? Who gets counter hit jabbed and then goes for the throw? See, this stuff, I need like an expert going through this would be really good. Cuz I, when I was doing it on my own, even with the limited knowledge I have, oh, okay, seeing the choices they're making helps. Counter hit jab is plus seven, yeah, counter hit jab is plus seven. It's quite, kinda crazy when you think about it, right? Okay, what are we doing? Counter hit low, go for the big low, down K plus G, good choice. Yeah, would've been a combo if they, if she needed it. Alright, what's next? What are we looking at? Okay. Ooh, that string seems to travel, there's multiple hits, uh, each hit will realign. Low, okay, so again, what are you when you hit, when you get hit by wake up low, I don't know, I don't know if I hit, we get to find out. Uh, she, every time she does it, she hits you, and then she tries to advance on you. This time she went for the mid. Uh, okay. Back chance, okay, cool. Ooh, whiff punish. Now you're gonna take a lot of damage cuz you're a light girl, huh? Okay, what's for oki? Now she back up on oki, I think Vanessa kinda has the advantage from long range cuz of her long limbs, so that's probably not a bad choice. Oh, yeah, that, that has multiple extension, that could be a high extension or a mid extension, she thought the high was coming, she thought wrong, she got clocked. Uh, she sidesteps, good choice, she thought the jab's coming. Goes for the grab, spin this bitch. Let's go. Okay, okay, what's next? Okay, missed Oliver twist, but no one's home, now you got side turn, what are you gonna do? Get grabbed. Knockout. She. 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 Alright, what's next? Round three, let's go. Okay, Vanessa step, in aggressive stance, we're standing up, how are we playing, how are we starting? Round start what? Round start jab versus round start sidestep, interesting choices, okay. Got the jab, went for a grab, crouched, ooh, hit him with the Oliver twist, please, sir, may I have some more? Bang. Damage, huh? Uh. Uh-uh. Uh, uh, hold that, what's that, 40%? 45? Wake up kick mid, missed, ooh, try to take the turn back, got it wrong. Break the throw, what's for breakfast, what's for oki? Uh, that move is fucked up, that move is plus three. Plus three mid, wait, I think so, wait, the defensive stance version of it is plus three, that might not be. Went for the grab, crouch dash forward throw, let's go. On oki, so, again, okay, so, remember what we did in training mode? She does the throw, right? I think she was going for back forward K plus G, but because the camera moved, she, she got this. Cuz you saw me doing the exact same thing, I feel less bad knowing the high level people do the same thing. She was going for back forward K plus G, but she fucked up cuz of the camera move. Dick jab. Yo, dick jab into catch throw with Vanessa, hella strong, hella strong. Then that's back throw, ew, violence, fucking violence. Ooh, that move's a counter hit, that truck's to one side and it's counter hit, ooh, and it's safe, that was fucked up. I think Pi's dead. Yeah, Pi's dead, Pi's dead. That move's fucked up, counter hits, and don't forget, if a, if a tracking move catches you when you're sidestep, sidestepping, that counts as counter hit, that was fucked. It's a high, though. That move's fucked up. That move's fucked up. Okay, aggressive stance. She wants to go aggressive, okay, double back dash. Who? Missed that, hold that, oh, I didn't, done unleash the mid. Yo, that's actually a good choice. There's a mid follow-up that she didn't go for, but she knew that Vanessa would respect, so she did that, and then went straight to the Oliver twist, I respect it. I might start doing that. Go hit with the Oliver twist. Forward, okay, okay, up, okay, uh, up forward, uh, K plus G, I think. Ooh, in the back. Ooh, that's the move again. Oh, you might be at the ring, you know? Might be, oh, no, you're not, you're not, you're not, you're fine, you're fine, you're fine, you're fine, you're fine. How you doing? I'm good, Monsieur, I'm good, trying to learn this game. Crash dash throw, while standing, uh, crash dash throw, again, she fucked up the back forward K plus G, I really do think that. Oliver twist, blocked. Jab, minus two, neutral throw, get fucked. Ooh, bunker busted, you hate to see it, bro. Ooh! Ooh, ooh! Ooh! Ooh, oh? Oh, 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 it's not over? Yeah, it's over. Ooh! Let's go. Oh, you fucked up. Hold that, the low, good shit. Good shit, yeah, that's what someone should do, if you're experienced, I think you should go through, like, cuz I can't do it, cuz I have no idea what I'm saying, but I think, uh, experienced player should fucking, uh, go through matches in slow motion just to help us understand decisions being made. I think it'd be really useful. But yeah, normal, let's go. That's where I'm really struggling, like, I, I don't know how to think like a VF player. Alright, what's next? Leon, this motherfucker seems cheap. Leon, yo, fuck Leon. Weak HSA, can't even win with Pi, bro, look at this motherfucker. Not seeing much of this matchup, time to play Leifay, fuck, fuck outta here, bro. Fuck outta here, bro, with your Leifay. I don't believe in Leifay, I believe in you, I believe in VF numbers, I don't believe in Leifay, bro. I think you'd be, I think your life would be much easier, you've played a better character. Oh? There's nothing guaranteed after that? Cuz it says like, black, my plus 14. But I guess, maybe they, maybe it got changed? Hello. What up, Monsieur? I said hello, how you doing? Oh, hold that, hold that, let's go. Ooh, the kick, we truly lost one martial art. Bro, what are you talking about, man? Pi, Pi's a martial artist, fuck outta here. Why is he martial artist? He got kung fu, kung fu. Pi has that ground throw after that, knockdown, alright, cool. Hold that. Okay, what does he do after 1P, oh, sorry, after 3P? Hold that. 3P, he does, he goes straight into the jab, and then, okay, he does what I do. Okay, cool. Except he dies. Am I up? Don't correct me, lol. Sidestep, am I up? See, that's real, sidestep, am I up is real, bro. You gotta hold that. Ooh, get fucked. So the bad time for Leon, I mean, it's a bad time for Pi. Oh, hold that shoulder. Yeah, he goes into jab, oh, he goes into jab, that's twice, two for two. Oh, that one's fucked up. Up forward, pick, keep, K plus G? I think. I think it's K plus G, into, into dick jab, fucked up. Oh, get fucked. Hmm? Hmm? Ooh, why your throw so wack? Leon, why you so wack? Am I up? Get fucked. Am I up? Ooh, everyone's getting am I up? Ooh, that's 9K, oh, 9K, got you, got you, I knew it was 9 something, 9K, regular kick, thank you. And then 9KK has extension. Hold it. Yeah. Hold it! Wow, nice combo asshole, look at these Hades combos, bro. Yeah, Leon has really weird animations, I'm not a fan. And a weird voice. Hold that. Ba ba, ba ba, hold that. Plus four, into low sweep. You know what? You know what? I'm gonna start doing low sweeps. I'm gonna start doing low sweeps, you know what? I'm gonna start doing low sweeps, I don't think y'all, y'all don't believe in low sweeps, I believe in low sweeps, I believe in violence, I believe in attacking them shins. Look at this, this motherfucker is level 41. 41 Dan, he's doing low sweeps? Why the fuck not? Hold that. Hold that. I believe in low sweep. Oh, condition with low sweeps, make him duck, I say, yes, say, Wells, make him duck, bro. Protect the goddamn ankles, a hundred percent, I will do it. Oh, but it's minus a billion, bitch, I came here to gamble. I came here to bet, I came here to bet, bro. See? Oh, he went for the low, he got greedy, he got greedy, I said don't go for the low, I said don't go for the low, this shit is free damage, right? Unblock, why would, why would you not save? That shit, unblock, plus one on block, right? On block, why would, why would you not save? That shit on block, plus one on block, right? Free damage, just keep it, why you have to be greedy? Look, and now, now you're fucking in the air, bro. Don't go for the, this, this is, uh, if we, if we've learned one thing, this shit, Mian Show, uh, K plus G, punch, 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 that's all jailing, it's all safe, plus in fact. But the kick extension, don't do it, bro. There's no need, don't get greedy, never do the low, never, never, ever. So, wall throw, hold that, the low, oh. Yo, this bitch got lows though, why you got so many lows, Leon? Chin ass bitch. Chin ass bitch, alright, cool, Jackie, Jackie, one more thing. Jackie, no more flip kicks, he shops at lows, a hundred percent. Yo. Love it, polygon model, let's go. Uh, 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 okay, he does the jab, he does the low into the jab too, we out here, hold that, the low, huh? Okay, that's, oh. So you're gonna main Pi or learn, no, I'm playing Pi, I'm playing Pi, I'm maining Pi, last week was about figuring out who I'm gonna main. Uh, and now I'm trying to like actually optimize and figure some shit out. This is why I'm doing like actual labbing stuff now. Oh, in the back, hold that. Oh, what is, okay, respectfully, what is this damage? I hope it got nerfed, I know this is the older version of the game, what is this damage though? What the fuck, what the fuck? Yo, hit him with the Oliver Twist, let's go, please sir, may I have some more? Please, oh, with the Oliver Twist, please sir, ba ba, ba ba, let's go. That damage ain't shit, that damage ain't shit, oh yeah, cause you play late, you do, you do real damage, you do real damage. Yo. That might be the best looking circular in the game, oh, hold that. Ooh, hold that. Hmm, hmm, hold that, hmm? I've been playing Jackie recently as well, oh shit, we out here doing dumb damage. I'm curious, you'll take on Vanessa, I'm a noob, man, talk to Wells, Wells knows more about me, he's a vet, he's a young, he's a young vet, but he's a vet. Vanessa seems cool though, I do like Vanessa, Vanessa seems sick, at the end of the day, it became between Pi versus Vanessa, no intention trying Aline, nah. She seems to, yeah, she's not my style, I see the strength of it though, but not my style. Also, I'm trying to beat, I'm trying to beat fucking Tricky Aline, that's, that's the mission, I'm trying to climb through. Beifay, poor Beifay, yeah, poor Beifay, I'm trying to, I'm trying to eliminate, I'm like, you know Kill Bill, when Kill Bill's got the list, I've got a list of people, I'm trying to cross off. VF numbers, LD Wells, off the list, fucking Marley J, cross him off the list, fucking, who else, who else? VF numbers, off the list, Tricky Aline, off the list, fucking, uh, uh, Gentleman Thief? Off, I'm slowly just fucking crossing these motherfuckers, these dinosaurs off, bro, I'm the meteorite, I'm gonna get rid of these dinosaurs once and for all, slowly. But right now, I'm in my training arc, you know how it is, oh, I fought Marley J in ranked, yo, Marley J fucked up, Marley J fucked me up, bro, Marley J, I nearly took him, fifty. I take it, oh, almost, oh, Yashandi, bro. Bro, come at me, bro, trust me, I'm cooking, I'm cooking all of you, you wait, you wait, bro, you ain't seen me, you ain't seen nothing yet, see this three hour labbing session? That's what I'm like, bro, I'm a cook, I'm gonna do this for, I'll do this for months, I'll do this for years if I have to. Um, it's that OCD in me. Yeah, Marley J cooked me for like twenty minutes straight, twenty minutes, thirty minutes straight, just cooking me, I'm like, fuck. You probably decimate me, I don't know about that, chief, I don't know about that, chief, I'm just a cheezer, I don't know about that, no, but, no, but honestly, cheeses are the best to learn, cause I, I do cheese too. And then you, and then eventually you get tired of losing to me, then you learn how to beat my cheese, then I have to learn how to beat your cheese, literally, the only reason I've done any labbing so far is because aggressive pixels were cooking me, bro. Just see that day one, aggressive, cooked me like twenty to two, bro, twenty to two, it was the most disgusting thing. And I was like, never again, hit the books, kid, hit the lab. That's how it is, bro, he cooked me, and he's a noob, that's the thing, losing to a veteran is one thing, he was a noob too, so yeah, but he can't beat me though, it's like, damn, he's right, I can't beat him. That's how you get good at any fighting game, you need, you need a boy who just bodies you, like, no, I can't be losing to my older brother, can't be losing to my cousin, can't be losing to my basketball teammate. Rivals, bro, nothing makes you better than a rival, nothing, nothing. Only one of us is allowed to be having fun, and spoilers, it's not you, bro. Okay, so what did he do? So what is this, what is this? So he does, he does the low, hold on. Glow into the cancel, into the fourteen frame mid, get sidestep, hold that. Ooh, yeah, nice combo asshole, hate these combos. Am I off? Ooh, that staggers, ooh. That might be juicy, what, what was that, hold on. But, so maybe you don't have to do the list trust, you just go for that, fucking stagger, and then ba ba, into the low, am I what? That's what I said, am I off? That's what I said, am I off? That's what you said, lol. Kappa. Oh, oh, I didn't practice that, is she plus there? She might be plus there. You might, that might be raw, that might be raw bokutai, you have to guess, and you guess wrong, that might be raw bokutai. I'm just doing it to piss you off now, am I off? I'm taking that until I die. Am I off? Yeah, you have to give, you have to guess there, yo, I believe in Mian Show, I'm a spam Mian Show, that shit's fucked. So what, what's the sequence, hold on, what's the sequence? Mian Show, you gotta guess. Guess with the mid. The back turn into the, uh, AX higher. Hmm, low, don't follow up, fourteen frame, oh, hold that, hold that, hold that. Nice, broke the stagger, good shit. Yeah, I think defensive stance is way much harder to like defend against, way harder. Am I off? Exactly, am I off? No, see, see, look, this is what I'm, I was saying, bro, I was saying this, not enough pies use this, this is, this to me, I'm a noob, but this seems like free damage, look at this shit, look at this. I do this, ba ba, free damage, look at that damage, it's free, if they block it, it all jails, and I'm plus one. If they get hit, they lose all that damage, bro, oh, but she fin, don't finish the string, don't finish, I don't believe in finishing the string, I think finishing the string is, is, is wrong, fifty percent though. And then again, ba ba, you're safe, just do it, just do it, leave side turn on here, no, no, yeah, on here, yes, side turn on here. Only player players know this, that's what I'm saying, it's free damage, bro, on block, you're plus one, on here, the side turn, every free damage, bro, I, just do it. Just do it, you see what I'm saying? I don't, I don't, you don't do them, and look at this, bro, not enough pies do this, not enough pies do, I'm telling you, spam that shit, I will. I think that's one of those sequences that's gonna get you to fucking, whatever this game's equivalent of Fujin is, that's fucked up, bro. It's free damage. And how do you beat it? You have to duck, but if they start ducking your Mian Show, then you just do fucking, you do the bokutai thing, and you're plus on the bokutai thing on plus or hit either. So if they start ducking, they're winning, you've conditioned them. Yo, nice, nice break. Ooh, ooh. Am I off? Am I off? Let's fucking go. Yeah, I'm not gonna, I'm not even gonna try butchering that in case aggressive pixels explode. Alright, let's go, what's he saying? Okay, let's go, Polygonor Blaze, this is a character I actually wanna laugh, this character seems really weird. How the fuck do you defend against this? Oh, she's been listening, she comes to Hop Kick City, she believes, she knows, man, just, hey, Mian Show, free damage, bro, just do it, just fucking do it. Hold that. Spin this bitch, let's go, Mian Show. Uh, oh, L Blaze players, with that fit, have no fear, a hundred percent. The real Mexican Akumas. Oh, that's fucked up, empty jump. Don't jump, no, empty jump at me, what do I do when they jump at me, bro? Yo, I'd have got fucked up just like that, what do they do when they jump at me, bro, what do I do? Do I crouch? Is it just a straight up demon flip mix? Nice, Mian Show, yes, I believe in Mian Show, yes, Mian Show, oh, no, I don't believe in that though. Aggressive only if you beat Chad, exactly. There you go, you gotta do it, do it, alright, oh. Oh, get fucked, Mian Show. Do it, do it, Mian Show, jab him, do Mian Show. Oh, that's good whiff punish. Down forward kick, that's good whiff punish, hold that. That stance, when he runs, is called rocket discharge, that's, that's, that's kinda sick, kinda sick. Oh, oh, good block, good blocks, oh, guaranteed, low. Big jab, Oliver Twist, the block. Oh, hold that, no damage, oh, get fucked. I found UT, the L Blaze have Godbreak input as well, fucked. Your L Blaze is so fucking scary, I was like, why, what is happening? He's just flipping at me, I'm confused. Nice, the low, the low sweep, tomorrow I'm gonna have a three man lobby, so, you know, first come, first served. Uh, we're gonna play some quick, quick rounds, quick rounds, put people up. Oh, hold that. Play some games. Let's fucking go, uh, 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 uh. Come on, Pi, oh, okay, so let's, let's look at that, hold on, hold on, hold on, real quick, real quick, real quick. Okay, uh, PK, is L Blaze anything like King? No, I don't think so, I don't think he's anything like King. He does have the running mix though, he does have that running mix situation, he's got that. Ah, bokutai, there you go, we're out here. Yeah, I don't think he's like King, but he does have the running, he, it's basically, think about the running mix, whether he's just coming at you and having to make a decision really quickly, L Blaze is like that. He can get in and out, hit and run style, it's like, oh fuck, you have to make a decision right now. And he's very good at putting you in a situation. It's a bit like El Fuerte in Street Fighter IV, he played that game, just fucked up. Alright, this is my last one, I'm gonna go raid someone, I'm gonna raid someone who's watching. And while, and I'm gonna go eat some food, cause I still haven't had dinner, lol, even though it's 2 AM, lol, uh, I'm doing some practice, and then I wanna go to bed. Thank you everyone who's been with me, showing me stuff and being patient while I try and figure out how the fuck this game works. And I hope you're all ready, alright, never play your SF, yeah, just before your time, fucking child. Mian Show, see, yo, bro, I'm telling you, Mian Show is the future, bro, not enough pies use it, this guy, Aline, Aline, he's the only one who's doing it. Talk to me, bro, Mian Show, free damage. Oh, he got crossed up. There's more, where that came from, Google Doc, I don't know what that is. I mean, I've played every Tekken, okay, fair enough, still a child. Oh, yeah, whiff punish, I don't like SF, that sounds good, I like SF, but I'm, I'm not addicted to SF. I'll play this Street Fighter game and I'll be like, okay, this is fun, I feel about, the way I feel about Street Fighter is the way I feel about shooters, shooters are fun for a bit, but I can't be one of those guys who play it every single day. Play a name in Japanese, oh shit, alright, I'll post it for everyone, hold on. Alright, here's a Google Doc, KSRD has put together. Of best players for each character, so the character you wanna play, find the, find the, the pro, I appreciate you sharing that, KSRD. Am I off? Oh, oh, she almost rang herself out, hold on, hold on. Yo, we got parries, yo, aggressive, real talk, next time we play against you, the real goal is to fucking try and parry you, get revenge on you, you bitch ass. That's guaranteed after par, after every parry, okay. Am I off? Hold it, oh, stagger. Uh, stagger, uh, PK, into bokuho, almost flipped himself out. Madla, called, I see SHU on this, good luck, goes a pixel, good luck, good luck. Back turn, hold that, hold that, yo, this is fine. Aline, Aline is my, I don't know if Aline's the best, but he, of all the people I'm watching, he's the one I believe in, I believe in his Pi, I wanna steal his style. Is, this is my favorite phase of when you're learning a fighting game, you pick a character, you pick somebody who plays that character, when I first started learning Leo in Tekken VII, I was like, I'm so hot, I'm stealing from, I'm so hot. Even though he lost to like the old veterans, the way he played was fucking degenerate, just hell sweeps all day, I don't care, live by the hell sweep, die by the hell sweep, I'm gonna play that game, so right now, Aline is my I'm so hot. Shout out to I'm so hot, whatever the fuck happened to him. I'm so hot innovated her, I, I loved I'm so hot. In terms of Okey, yeah. I'm so hot was sick. He retired, yeah, he seemed like he retired, I don't know what happened, he disappeared at, like midway through Tekken VII. By the time the console game released, he was, he was done, which is a shame. Oh, you got mixed, I got hit, aggressive after labbing, every single power move, so he can cook you twenty times, then go GG. GG is the worst, bro, if someone goes like, ay, take that bitch, I'm like, yeah, cool, smack talk, but someone saying GG, it's the worst, bro, it's the worst, don't GG me. Don't body me and then say GG, well, I'm so hot, only practiced basically innovated her in T6, yeah, I already saw him in T7, when he was getting kicked by, uh, what's his name? What's the name of the king player, NBC, MCB? As I remember him getting cooked by him, even though he wasn't a Leo man. Hold that, NBC, yeah, I saw him getting cooked by NBC, it was just funny as fuck. He's my, oh, yeah, SLS was dope, yeah, the, the, the Lily player, or the, the Horang player who was playing a Lily, or playing Horang, fucking key charging after every round, fucking love that shit. Oh, those are the, those are the days. This is my favorite phase of learning a fighting game, I'm watching, oh, you're parried, bitch. Ba ba ba, hold that, SLS still plays, yeah, he does, he does still play, yeah, he still plays. If I'm so hot came back, he wouldn't play Leo though, that's for damn sure. Yeah, what we doing? Mian Show, see, that move is free money, bro, just do it. Alright, kinda got cooked, but I didn't get cooked because of that move. Hmm, oh, oh, that grab is so sick. Hold it, the parry. This song is so sick as well. Oh, the full charge. See, I don't know if I believe in the full charge. The pros be ducking it, the pro, I mean, noobs aren't dodging it, but the pros be dodging it, bro, motherfucker ain't even a Leo main, sit here down playing Leo all the time, shut the fuck up, man. Look at this bitch, this bitch got a real bokuho stance, oh, the grab, oh, I, what's guaranteed after the grab? Oh, nothing's guaranteed after the grab, okay, it's, it's a mix. Oh, GG, GG. This bitch has a real bokuho stance, has a load. Oh shit, okay, this is the last one, I keep saying this is the last one, but this game's too much fun to watch, bro. Family Feud, a hundred percent. This loud player. Oh, don't ever do that move, even, Marley J taught me real quick, don't, this is the best guilty player of all time, damn, fuck. Don't ever do this move. Marley J showed me what happened to you when he used move, you fucking die, you fucking die. Ooh, good break, oh no, hold that. Oh yeah, Lau was the fastest while standing launcher in the game, damn, second player? Damn, I'm gonna be honest, I didn't even look at Lau, he's too old, too ugly, I'm like, he ain't cute enough for me to consider you. Oh fuck, I didn't, I didn't look at backwards, uh, backwards, backwards KK. Oh, hold that. Oh, in the side, the damage, oh, oh, oh. She's your daughter, don't do this. Hold that. Hold that, okay. You know, they don't do that move that often, despite the counter hit property, is the counter hit property new? Beifay, it's helicute, they shoot. Ugh, crumple, yeah, I love that crumple, ugh, in the side, you're just done. Right, right, oh, my move. Below, yes, plus four, break the throw. Ooh, while standing, hold that, uh, uh. It's not looking good for a hero, I'm not gonna lie. Uh, 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 oh, the Oliver Twist. Oh. Ah! Ah! Yo, the reeds! Ah, reeds! That's sick. That's actually sick. That's high, that's high, that's high, that's high, that's high. Oh, oh, that move is fucked up. Look at the damage, oh! Oh, crumple, hold that! Digger! Oh, oh, we ducking those. We not get a bigger punish? Oh, hold that. You're done. Invite them to the dojo? Nah, it's cool, it's cool, it's cool, it's cool, it's cool, it's cool, it's cool. I don't invite killers. I only invite, there's a level, there's a level, there's a level. Alright, this has been great. Thanks for joining me. I'll be on tomorrow. I'll be, I'll pretty much be playing every day this week unless something comes up, because I'm, I'm loving VF and I can't get it out of my head. Uh, who are we gonna raid? Who's playing VF? Who's playing VF? Tricky, as always, playing VF. Uh, Shadoshia. Who have I not raided? Who, who's playing VF I've not raided? Uh. Oh shit, Gentleman Thief. Yo, okay, so if you wanna see potentially the best player in America, or in the West, potentially, let's go check out fucking Gentleman Thief. This guy's a killer, and he actually helped me yesterday, gave me some good advice, so... It was like, can you give me a guide on how to play Pi? It's like, I'll just play Pi and you can watch me. I was like, alright, cool, bet. And I learned some shit. Anyway, let's go. Peace out, y'all. Much love. I'll see you soon. Go give him a follow, tell him I sent you.